Charity Adams Early made many contributions to education, the military, and her community. Early was born on December 5th, 1918 in North Carolina. Charity was valedictorian at Booker T. Washington High School and received a scholarship to attend Wilberforce University. Early graduated in 1938 and began teaching math and science at a junior high school in South Carolina. During World War II, Charity joined the Women's Army Corps, or WAC. She traveled to Iowa to begin training. In 1943, she was promoted to major, being the highest-ranking female officer at the Training Center. In 1944, Early was made commanding officer of the first-ever unit of the WAC to travel overseas. She ran the 6,888th Central Postal Directory Battalion. The main objective of the 6th Triple Eight was to sort and send millions of pieces of backlog mail to U.S. servicemen in Europe. The mission was essential. The lack of mail meant low morale for the troops. Charity's unit handled 65,000 pieces during each eight-hour shift. They worked 24 hours a day. Remarkably, they cleared the mail in just three months. Early was promoted to lieutenant colonel in 1945, the highest possible rank for any woman in the WAC. After leaving the WAC in 1946, Early went back to Ohio State University and completed her master's degree. In 1947, she transitioned to being a dean of students for colleges in Tennessee and Georgia. Charity returned to Ohio in the 1950s. Here, she served the community, sitting on the Board of Directors and the Board of Governors for Dayton's Red Cross and Sinclair Community College. Early was also the founder of the Black Leadership Development Program in Dayton in 1982. It's no wonder that Dayton Public Schools honors the memory and achievements of this extraordinary woman by naming one of its schools after her. The Charity Adams Early Academy serves students from pre-K through the eighth grade. Celebrating Black History Month and Charity Adams Early, I'm Tobias Ashlock for Dayton Public Schools.
Dayton Public Schools, welcome to 2024. Interim Superintendent Dr. David Lawrence recently visited all middle and high schools across the district. Students were encouraged to speak up about their goals and their dreams. Accompanied by board members and staff, they reminded students to stay on course and never let anyone get in the way of their success. Let's make sure to positively represent our city and make our community proud. We'd like to welcome our new Dayton Board of Education members, Dr. William Bailey and Eric Walker. Dr. William Bailey said he's looking forward to so much, stating hard work, collaboration, and change. And Eric Walker said the growth of family, students, and staff. Will Smith was elected to serve as our 2024 Dayton Board of Education President, while Karen Wick was elected as our Board Vice President. If you're looking for more information regarding the Dayton Board of Education, check out DaytonPublic.com and click on "The Board." Dayton Public Schools is searching for its next superintendent. Our three finalists are Dr. David Lawrence, Dr. Elisa Smith, and H. Allen Smith II. Do you want to know more about each candidate? Check out our Superintendent Search series on YouTube.
My name is H. Allen Smith II, and I am a proud candidate for Dayton Public Schools.
Hello, I'm Dr. Smith, the chief of schools for Cincinnati Public Schools.
This is actually rather difficult, not because it's an interview, but it's forcing me to talk about myself, and that typically is not my style.
Who's your choice? Let us know your thoughts down below. Students, it's getting cold outside. Make sure you are bundled up when standing outside waiting for the bus. If you're in need of any winter clothing items such as hats or gloves, please reach out to a trusted teacher, principal, or counselor. If you'd like to help out, the district is collecting new winter items in any size for our students. Collection bins will be located at these five locations until February 16th. Anything helps to keep our students warm this winter, and we appreciate your donations. I'm Landon Keaton. We'll catch you next time on, in case you missed it. Thanks for joining us today on DPS TV. I'm Landon Keaton.
And I'm Damia Wada.
Today's a cold one, but not cold enough to cancel school.
Thanks, DPS.
As cold temperatures sweep through the Miami Valley, we ask all parents to properly dress their children for the bus stop.
Now, let's go to DeShawn Robinson with the weather.
Hi, I'm DeShawn with DPS TV Weather. It's going to be a cold one out there. All students riding the bus this morning will want to make sure they bundle up. We have a high of 10 degrees, but with the wind chill, it would feel like two. So make sure you wear a warm hat, gloves, socks, and a winter coat. Remember that it can be dangerous to have skin exposed for too long in cold weather. Back to the news desk.
Where would we be without meteorologist DeShawn Robinson, Google, and phones? Thankfully, we don't have those problems.
Now, let's take a live look outside with our award-winning reporter, Robin Patterson, who is in the thick of it all.
We are live with two students from Ponys CCC, and today it seems to be that they have two different stories on the weather and their clothing choices today. Why did you wear what you wore today?
Should you be talking to us about our parents out here?
Are you not cold?
Nah, I'm all right. It's a little cold out here.
What about you?
Freezing. I'm freezing. That's why I got my hat on, my gloves. I got my sweater up underneath this jacket, two pair of socks. Bro tweaking over there. I don't know what's going on. I don't understand it. Something wrong.
You cold?
I'm freezing. Are you freezing?
Nah, I'm all right. He just saw. It must be them ashy legs over there. I don't know what's going on. I can't understand it. It's cold out here.
Well, another winter day here in Dayton. Let's get back to the studio.
Thanks for your coverage. As a reminder to all parents, make sure your children are dressed appropriately. Cover your head, shoulders, knees, and toes. Wear your coat, wear shoes that cover your feet all the way, plus socks. And remember that even if it's sunny, it might still be cold.
Thanks for joining us today on DPS TV. Have a great day.
Wait, we just received breaking news that temperatures are climbing at an astonishing rate here in Dayton. Cutting back to Robin for a live view.
That's right, Landon. I can't believe it. We just went from a freezing cold weather to a hot sunny day. Only in Ohio you'll see something like that.
I told you I'd be all right. Only in Ohio.
The Adult Transition Unit Program is a program for students with special needs who have graduated from high school and chose to defer their diploma for a year so they can learn job skills and life skills. The goal of the program is for the students to become gainfully employed in the community. Some of the life skills that the students learn are how to write the RTA, they work on communication skills, and they learn how to budget their money. The students are in the program for one school year. They start the program in August and end in May. The students learn job skills by volunteering at three different sites: Sinclair Community College, the University of Dayton, and the Gospel Mission. At Sinclair Community College and the University of Dayton, the students work in the dining hall, where they learn customer service skills, serving customers. They also learn stocking skills and cleaning skills. At the Gospel Mission, the students learn janitorial skills. The majority of the students that complete the program get jobs. Some places that they get jobs at are the hospital, restaurant, grocery stores, and retail stores.
Once the students have had their opportunity to learn the different jobs within food service here at the college, then it is beneficial for them. They are able to go out and market themselves to the different food service employers and the Restaurant Association to let them know that they have worked in the front of the house washing tables and greeting with the customers, and vice versa in the back of the house, how to do all the stock and inventory, all the way to closing out at the end of the day, taking and mopping and doing all the traction, everything. So as a benefit for them as they apply within the restaurants, then that gives them the ability to let them know that they've been trained in those duties. As a contractor here at Sinclair, we have enjoyed tremendously the students coming in on a weekly basis, helping us with our day-to-day operations. And I think the benefit and the partnership that we have with the Dayton Public School Systems is a wonderful program, and we hope that it continues on so we can have these students be able to go out into the general population and get jobs.
Goodwill Easter Sales are proud partners with Dayton Public Schools in helping them enrich their lives for better futures. As a job developer, we assist the students with developing work-related skills for competitive employment within the community. We meet with them each Friday. In addition, we discuss and demonstrate potential job openings, get to know each person and what their interests are. We discuss and demonstrate potential job openings, help them research that particular position, that company, and see if it's a good match for each individual that we serve.
This transition program with Dayton Public Schools has given students with special needs the opportunity to achieve their transition goals by becoming gainfully employed in the community, and also it helps them achieve their independent living goals, which will make them successful throughout life.
Hey, Joe.
How's everybody doing tonight?
I started going running. And I stretch. And that's the first step.
Stretching is the first step.
You gotta stretch after too. You lay down, you're not gonna get back up. I am beyond the couch, sir. Got a new pair of shoes and everything. It's a first-world problem, but I'm having one right now.
Ms. Reiner says she was a couple seconds in, so going for a moment, and then we'll be going. Appreciate everybody coming out. I want to respect everybody's time. How you doing, Dave, sir? How's everything been going?
Going well. It's going well. Could you open up for him, though? See? You don't want to work alone. Great deal going on up here. I appreciate you too.
Yeah, we got different times, but in 30 seconds. Go ahead.
Good evening. I'd like to call this February 13th, 2024, a review session to order. Can I have a roll call, Madam Treasurer?
Yes. President Smith?
Present.
Ms. Wick?
Present.
Dr. Goodwin?
In the building.
Dr. Bailey? Mr. Lacy?
Here.
Mr. Walker?
Here.
Ms. Reiner?
Ms. Reiner should be coming shortly, and we'll let the record reflect when she shows up.
Mr. Nicholas?
Here.
May I say Mr. Nichols is clean today?
Mr. Nichols is clean every day.
(Inaudible) United States of America, and true republic, with righteous hands, one nation under God, indivisible, and just as small.
All right, before we get going with our special presentations, Madam Treasurer can let the record show that Ms. Reiner is with us now. She's getting set up. See, we have three special presentations. Can you get us going with our first presentation, Dr. Lawrence?
Absolutely. Thanks a lot, President Smith. Our first presentation is On Main, so we're much anticipated and we're looking forward to it.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Board President Smith, Vice President Wick, Board Members, Superintendent Lawrence, thank you for the opportunity to speak with you this evening regarding On Main and a potential growing partnership with Dayton Public Schools. So I'd first like to introduce a few folks that are with me this evening. I would have the President and CEO of Premier Health, Mike Reardon, is here, as well as the President of the University of Dayton, Eric Spina. I will call them up to say a few words here, but I would also like to recognize some of the staff that was integral in the proposal that we're putting forth to Dayton Public that are in the audience. Buddy LaChance, my colleague at On Main, Donell Wiggins from the University of Dayton, Nick Laird, Stacey Lawson, and Sharon White, thank you for your attendance. And I'd call Eric and Mike up to make a few remarks before I go on with them.
All right, well, thank you, and thank you to the Board for taking a few minutes to hear the proposal. For those of you who have not met, Mike Reardon, President and CEO, have been here two years now at Premier Health. Our mission is very simple, and we've changed. We care, we teach, which I want to emphasize, we innovate, and we serve. This is about the teach part of that. Our strategic plan, again, very simple. We have four pillars. Three of the pillars that we have relate to tonight. We talk about academics, talk about workforce development, and we talk about partnerships. We have a longstanding relationship with Dayton Public Schools, and we are entering into a strategic partnership, so we actually are putting our staffs together to plan what we need to do. I wasn't part of the initial On Main when it started, but my goodness, I am supportive of that. I think Dr. Spina's vision has been terrific, and my predecessor, Mary Bussalis, on getting that land and moving us forward. So I am delighted and very supportive, and hope that you will see it to be supportive of this project as well. Eric?
Thanks, Mike. Good afternoon, everyone. Thanks so much for having us. I'm Eric Spina, President of UD. I'm in my eighth year. In my first year, we were actually approached, along with Premier, to begin this partnership that's now On Main. Been a lot of ups and downs, including the pandemic, but we are really, after a very productive 12 to 18 months, we're really ready to move forward and expect some good things to happen this year. Appreciate your consideration. Obviously, UD and Dayton Public School System have a long distinguished relationship, lots of connect points between the institutions. You know, while this officially comes from On Main, UD and Premier certainly stand behind it and look forward to finding additional ways that we can partner. So again, thanks for your consideration. Appreciate the partnership.
Thank you. Next slide, please. Next slide, please. Just to echo what Mike and Eric said, you know, the relationship with DPS has gone on with both institutions for some years, and this lists a couple of those activities that have been going on during, over the last years and decades, honestly. So we believe this On Main project has the opportunity to expand and deepen the relationship with DPS. Next slide, please. I'm sure everybody's familiar with the site. This is an old photo, actually, before the buildings were taken down, the livestock buildings and the grandstand. The only building remaining is the Roundhouse. It's the oldest building. The second-oldest building, Barn 17, has been relocated over to Carolown Park, so I would encourage you to go over there and read about the history of the fairgrounds and visit that barn over there. But the next slide, please. I'd like to go over a little bit of some of the key milestones and what has happened over the last six or seven years with the project. UD and Premier purchased the property back in 2017. There were two community engagement activities in the first couple of years of the project. One, to set its vision, and the second, to set its master plan. So some of you may have participated in some of those sessions over the couple of years when those documents were being put together, but it was heavy engagement with the community, and their voice shines through on the vision and the master plan on the site. In 2018, that's when actually On Main, the 501(c)(3) was formed, and our board was set, and activity began from there. 2019 was a busy season. We had a lot of site work, a lot of demo, again, community workshops, all the zoning and the plan development was approved through the city of Dayton. And then in 2020, as we entered '20, the master plan was completed, but like Eric mentioned, we ran into COVID. And prudently, both organizations or supporting organizations focused on their core business, and not that they forgot about On Main, but it slowed for the right reasons. But during that time, there was still activity that was happening. The Diversity Equity Inclusion Charter was adopted in 2021, and as we started coming out of COVID, activity started to pick up on the site. We were, the site is LEED-certified community at a gold level, so not just the buildings that will go up on the site, the whole site is being certified as gold, as a LEED community. That's something to note. Also, we've received a $900,000 federal award to put work into the Roundhouse to stabilize the exterior of that building. That should happen later on this year, so you'll start to see some activity around the site. We also started our discussions back in 2022 with the school on the CRA TIF, and then as we walked into 2023, we spent a lot of time with developers on the vertical opportunities that the site presents. Next slide, please. So coming through the community sessions, this is what the vision of the site entails. You know, we want to represent the best of Dayton, establish a unique platform, create a density of ideas, but really create jobs and net new jobs on the site, and not just shuffle the deck chairs around the community. So there is a focus on that. Certainly, creating a setting to connect people and having a walkable neighborhood on the site is important. And then developing standards that reflect the mission and the values of both supporting institutions, certainly around sustainability, wellness, affordability, are all important attributes that mean something to the institutions that they want to instill onto the site. Next slide, please. This gives you a general sense of the total capacity on-site. There's room for roughly 20 buildings. You can see some of the square footages here on employment, square footages up to 900,000, up to 1,500 units of housing. Now, these square footages on the housing and employment can fluctuate back and forth. It all depends on the demand that we see from the marketplace, but this gives you a sense of the capacity on-site. You will notice that there isn't a large amount of retail here. We want to create enough retail to service what's on campus. Our goal is not to steal folks from downtown or even Brown Street, so we're very sensitive on creating enough retail presence there that can serve the surrounding community there, but not necessarily be a destination point from somebody an hour or two away. You could also see, we'll talk a little bit about structured parking here eventually to have the density we're looking for. We're going to need to have some structured parking. We envision up to potentially three garages on-site, and you could certainly see, we're definitely going to have to put streets, roads, and utilities in. So that just gives you a sense on the total capacity on-site. Next slide, please. This gives you a general view of what the master plan looks like. You could see the focal point up there in the upper right hand of being the Roundhouse. Some of the view sheds up the streets will lead up to the Roundhouse, and that was on purpose. You could see some of the other public amenities around the retention pond and the Roundhouse itself, so there'll be plenty of community space and ability for biking and walking, et cetera. Next slide, please. So our development approach really is, the institutions have been around both for over 100 years. We want to own the land in perpetuity, certainly set the stage, put the infrastructure in the ground, but then long-term lease those pads to vertical developers. We're not looking to build 20 buildings ourselves. We're looking to partner with developers to do that. So really, you'll hear me say land developer, that's essentially what we are here, is we're trying to set a quality stage for development to happen. You'll start to see, when we phase this infrastructure in, we want to start from south to north. So we envision three tranches of infrastructure will go in on the site, starting at Stewart and Main. The first tranche could be up to $24 million worth of infrastructure on the southern portion there. That would enable us to build the first five or six buildings on the site, and as development speeds up, then we can look at expanding the infrastructure northwards, but we're looking to tranche the infrastructure investment as we go forward. The total site's going to take over $70 million worth of infrastructure, so we don't want to put that all on on day one. We'll work our way into it. Next slide, please. So there's certainly, you can probably, yeah, thank you, there's certainly challenges and opportunities with a development like this. First and foremost, unlike some of the other development spots in the community or in the city, we have no infrastructure. It's been essentially a farmland for 160 years. So we're going to need to put in those roads, those utilities, the water, the sewer, et cetera, in order to get the vertical development to happen. So that certainly is a costly activity, but is needed in order for us to have activity on the site. Development density is important. You know, we don't want a sea of surface parking out there, but that is going to require structured parking at some point. That's expensive. So as we build out the site, it'll start out with surface parking, but as density and buildings come along, we will have to look at structured parking in the future. Sustainability, I spoke to this earlier with the LEED requirements. With these long-term lease agreements that we're going to have with the vertical developers, we are able to flow some requirements through those leases to those developers. So one of those items is going to be the LEED requirement. So every building on the site will have some form of LEED requirement to them that we will flow through those land leases. The same thing with affordability. Affordability is important to the institutions, so on the residential side, same thing, is we're not going to have all market rate and all low-income housing tax credit type of housing, but we want a blend of incomes. And unfortunately, there's not a lot of subsidy for those types of blended income housing developments, but it is something that is important to the institutions that we are going to require the developer to maintain on the site. Preservation, we spoke to this. Obviously, the Roundhouse, we're going to be doing the exterior, but someday we will be renovating that into the future, but preservation is a key quality of ours. I want to speak to the new job creation like I did earlier. The goal here is to bring net new jobs. It's not to shuffle the deck chairs or steal people from downtown. We want to have catalytic activity here that is able to be leveraged and spur additional buildings, so it'll be key how we set the stage here at the beginning of the development on the first couple of buildings that come out of the ground. And certainly synergistic partnerships, just like the one with Dayton Public Schools, but with others, we want to explore those synergistic partnerships. Next slide, please. In order to, oh, you clicked through there. There you go. So how do we move forward? What's the path forward? Certainly, we need to grow our partnership with DPS, and what that'll enable us to do is really unlock the potential of the site. It will enhance the existing partnership between the three entities, UD, Premier, On Main, and Dayton Public Schools. but with others, um, we want to explore, uh, those synergistic partnerships. Next slide, please. In order to, oh, you, you click through there. There you go. So how do we, how do we move forward? What's the path forward? Certainly, we need to grow our, our partnership with DPS, and what that'll enable us to do is really unlock the, the potential of the site. Uh, it will enhance the existing partnership, uh, between the three entities, uh, UD Premier, On Main, and, and Dayton Public Schools. And we anticipate, even after day one, there's going to be additional opportunities for collaboration and programs that we don't know about today, but if we're deliberate in our, in our proposal, in our agreement with Dayton Public Schools, we will cultivate those into the future. Uh, next slide, please. This, uh, slide speaks to the, the tax sharing plan, uh, proposal for the site. Uh, during the first fifteen years of the vertical constructions that, uh, buildings that go up, five percent of the property taxes would go to DPS. The second fifteen years, twenty-seven percent of those taxes would go to DPS, and then after year thirty, the full allotment, which is roughly sixty-five percent, would go to Dayton Public Schools. So we're trying to ramp this up, and honestly, to get to these numbers, we had to ask the, the supporting institutions to, to have patience on their payback, on their, their, their investment in the infrastructure. They're not getting pa- paid back over ten or fifteen years, it's more like thirty or forty years. So, we were able to get them to have some patience in order to provide some compensation back to Dayton Public Schools at, at, in an earlier spot than we probably normally would. Next slide, please. These are just some highlights of what's in, i- in the proposal. Now, this doesn't capture what's in the two-page document that you, you all have seen, so it's hard to fit that all on slides, but, uh, just some highlights. In addition to some of the, the, the pathways the university, uh, has for, uh, DPS students at the University of Dayton, we're creating another opportunity with two, at least, a mi- a minimum of two additional, uh, flyer promise scholarships for DPS students. Just this fall, and Donal can correct me if I'm wrong, but, um, I believe we had sixty-one DPS students attending the University of Dayton in, in the fall semester. Um, and I think since two thousand sixteen and seventeen, we've had roughly a hundred and fifty percent growth on DPS students attending the university. Um, we also, another important part to, to the, to the board and staff, I know, is, is, uh, identifying high-quality, uh, training and professional development programs for the staff in order we, for, for, uh, DPS to not only grow their staff, but keep their staff. And so we need to be more deliberate on how we connect those items, instead of just saying, well, they're available, but be very diligent on how could we deliver those, those, um, training, um, activities and professional development programs in a more cohesive way. On the Premier Health front, you could see that create, uh, there's multiple programs intended to cultivate, uh, interest by DPS students in the healthcare careers. Again, on the two-page document, it goes into more detail of what those are. Um, and certainly, uh, they're looking to explore the opportunity to provide the athletic trainers, uh, to support DPS athletics. And I know staff has been working along with, with, uh, the team over at Premier concerning those, um, those services. Next slide, please. Um, one, uh, component we like to see is to get, uh, DPS have a representative on our advisory committee over at On Main. We meet quarterly with community leaders, and the input from DPS is very critical as we move forward, so, uh, we hope to solidify that, uh, very soon. And then also, this is also about, uh, talking about being deliberate. Having us get together at least once a year to not only review the status of the partnership, but then also, um, looking at different opportunities that we know will come about that will be beneficial for all that are involved here. Uh, again, all these institutions have been around at least almost a hundred years and not longer, and looking to, to go into the future and build on, on those past, uh, past programs and, and, and relationships. So, I think that ends my prepared remarks. If you guys have any questions.
Okay, fir- excuse me. First, I want to say I appreciate everyone coming out, taking the time out of your schedules to come down and present to us. I really appreciate, um, that time that you put in to the presentation. I appreciate the, the patience and working with us as we come together in this space. Um, definitely want to say that this is something that, I think on our end as a district, we're always looking at how can we be beneficial to our community, um, staff, students, and the community at large. So I appreciate that. Before I hand it over, four comments from the board, or questions from the board, I do want to let everyone on the board know that the two-page that Mr. Hitecamp was speaking on is in the public content section of Board Docs, so if you haven't seen that, it is there. And with that, I want to turn it over. Any comments, questions, people on the board?
Mr. Lacy?
Thank you very much, and, and thank you to the president of, uh, President Spina, and, I'm sorry, I forgot, and Mike. My sister worked at Premier for thirty years, and she just retired. She was a diabetes educator. And I'm from the class of eighty-two of the University of Dayton, as our, and, and five of my siblings graduated from there. My father lived in Saint Joe's Hall, he was in the class of fifty-one. That said, I, uh, this project, I mean, it, it, it does appeal to me, but it's, it's, I, I have, I have been on, on different sides of the fence based upon the project, but this one, I think, it goes beyond making this whole. It, it, it's, uh, you know, make sure that, that we would get more than just what we would have gotten had it sat. This is not the kind of project that's, um, um, this is not the kind of, I'm pretty convinced that, you know, and I'm not downplaying the development, but it's not necessarily the kind of development that would have happened had, had we not, uh, joined in this venture. Or if we had not joined in this venture. So I, I, um, I look forward to the project, and I thank you for your presentation, and I, and I look forward to working with you. Thank you.
Head down to Mr. Walker, then Dr. Goodwin, or Dr. Goodwin first?
Dr. Goodwin got it.
Dr. Goodwin, then Mr. Walker.
Appreciate you coming out. Thank you. Uh, you know, UD Law School class of twenty-fourteen. My picture's in the basement now, so, that's a thing. Yeah. I am excited to hear, because I did get a chance to talk to you guys when I first heard this project, and I kind of want to just hear and let our community know a little bit, because again, my concern is always how, how things continue to grow us as an organization here. And I saw in the slideshow, you mentioned some of the, you talked about kind of some of the staff development. Can you give me a little bit more on that piece right there? Because I, I'm really big on our workforce and us growing, because as we become stronger as in that area, I believe that we really will impact our most valuable assets, which are our children. So just talk to us, give me a little bit more on, what does that even mean?
Sure, I'll, I'll give it my best shot here. Um, so, uh, with the university, there's the Center of Leadership, um, that, that the university has, as well as a School of Education Health Sciences. And when we, we've discussed, there are programs that are readily available, uh, to, uh, DPS staff for that, but sometimes it's hard. There's, there's certainly barriers, whether it be time, a time of year, uh, cost, et cetera. And, and it's trying to alleviate those barriers, and whether we have to customize certain programs and bring them to the school where the staff is, if we can get a cohorts, uh, put together. And I think there was more discussions on, on ways that we can deliver the product in a more efficient manner, that it's easier for the staff to, to take advantage of it instead of going out and seeking it itself, but then also having the barriers, whether that be the time of year, um, the location, et cetera. So I think, um, at least from what I'm hearing from our staff at the university, I think there's a lot of ways we can plug in, uh, to DPS and its staff, uh, to provide those services.
Thank you. Slide plug for the staff, we passed a policy last year that gave five thousand dollars in professional development for every staff member, non-bargaining unit, because I think the bargaining units do their own thing. But I do want you guys to take advantage of that. Appreciate that. Can you talk to me a little bit too? And I saw the scholarships on there. The scholarships, do, would those be the life of the prod- of the life of the agreement or the partnership?
No, that's, that's a great question. So, once they begin, we would start in a fifteen-year, uh, period. So they wouldn't go for fifty years? I mean, I guess, I'm sure that, that other programs will come and go a- as time goes on, but we would commit it for the term of fifteen years.
Okay. And if someone got a scholarship in the beginning of the fifteen-year, it would be honored through the end of it? Two is? Thank you for the presentation.
Mr. Walker?
Okay, so it, because the first it said at least two, so it's guaranteed two per year? Okay. So, thank you for the presentation, um, and I appreciate last week. Right. Right. Gotcha, thank you. Not a doctor, don't want to pay that much for another degree. But what I will say is, thank you for the presentation. Um, my questions, um, are more so geared towards Premier. Um, I think I got a pretty much a good understanding with UD, uh, with our conversations. Okay? Think that, okay. Uh, so what I can appreciate, the collaboration efforts with athletics and the, um, athletic trainers. Um, I think that's very beneficial for the district going forward, and I see our Chief of Athletics in the back, um, and I think that this is something that's, um, great for the district and especially where, where we were this year with trainers. Um, my other question, or, and my other comment I would say is, I can appreciate with the development background, knowing that, uh, this is a CRA on top of a TIF and not just a TIF, uh, where the district does not get any type of benefit. Um, so that one, with regard to the career fair, uh, it says one per year, and I'm just curious as to, Premier holds probably five or six a year, um, what that looks like from the career fair for the district, but also the sustainability with the actual programs in the district with staffing and things like that. Is that more of a district is going to now pay those staff to then work with that program? Or how does that work? Thanks.
Good evening. I'm Nick Laird, um, work at Premier Health. I work on the athletic trainers, the school partnerships. We have thirty-nine different school, um, districts that we partner with for athletic training. And, uh, Ms. Victoria Jones, uh, last year reached out to Premier Health, uh, to see if we would consider, um, being a partner in the athletic training service line. Um, since then, Premier Health could not provide the service, because we clearly communicated, we didn't have the staff to do it. We wanted to be honest and upfront, and if we could not deliver the service to our quality standards, we didn't want to join in. The last six months, we have worked very hard to recruit, um, athletic trainers, and in the last couple of days, last couple of weeks, we have reached out to Dayton Public Schools again to re-energize our discussions. Um, we're meeting with Dayton Public Schools in the next day, um, to start those conversations so that we, wearing our blue shirts, will be on all the athletic fields at Dayton Public Schools.
Okay, so that's six full trainers, all right?
That is, that is, we're meeting with Dr. Lawrence tomorrow, but yes, that is, that is our, we've worked very hard to commit to that, yes.
Okay.
We, we, we didn't want, we couldn't do that last year. That's what we've been striving towards this year, to meet the six high schools that you have, yes.
Okay. Thank you. The, uh, so I would, I would be interested to see how that goes, uh, before I decide on my vote for anything to move forward. Um, just me personally, um, I think the athletics component with the trainers and the state of our students is very important. But thank you for that.
Bring this way down. So Stacey Lawson over Human Resources. I think your question was related to, um, what I am understanding is around the career fairs, correct?
Well, it was a career fair, and on this, again, public document, um, it was, uh, the summer program, DPS, Premier Health will work with DPS design and offer a summer program for nurses, respiratory therapists, medical imaging technologists, pharmacy techs, and things like that. Did not know if that was a staffing thing for Dayton Public, or is it a staffing thing for Premier Health?
Um, when you talk about a s- a staffing thing, so
Yeah.
it will be something that will be supported by Premier Health. So, we are really trying to grow our workforce in that area. We recognize that you all have students who are interested in career fields in that area. That is something that we would be staffing, working in collaboration with your team to ensure that that is something that's happening. And I think your first part of the question really was answering around, because I thought I heard you to say one. So we established that as a baseline, because what we thought was really important was to set the stage for what our presence would look like.
Okay.
Um, I don't believe that one is going to be the minimum, um, because we know that the needs for Dayton Public Schools are significant, and we really want to partner around that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Um, and then lastly for me, um, I did do some research on the board policy. The board has a policy, B C F A, that says that our Business Advisory Committee will release a report by March first. Um, so if I could see the most recent copy of that and where we are with that for the new round, since Premier will be a part of this, um, that's it for me. Thanks.
Any other questions, comments? Ms. Reiner?
Thank you. First of all, I apologize for being a few minutes late to my colleagues, that doesn't usually happen. I would like to thank our community partners for coming out today. Um, I was actually late because I was at an event at UD. Um, I really, really, truly value the ways that we all come together. Um, we cannot exist or work in silos and be successful, and it's by partnering, it's by understanding what the needs are in the community, seeing where we can fill those gaps and working together, having a collaborative, productive, good working relationship, um, that spans previous years and is projected to go into the future, is something of great, great value, and I'm deeply grateful to be a part of an organization that recognizes that and sees other organizations that have that as well, too. Um, I want to say that, um, I'm really grateful for the terms in this, um, MOU and this agreement. Um, it's very, it, it is crafted with our needs in mind, and I thank you for that. My question and, um, concern is going to be a little, pointed a little bit towards us. Um, we talk all the time about these community agreements and tracking them and making sure that everything is, is going as planned, and my question is for the interim superintendent. I would like to make sure that this, um, is a really fruitful relationship, and I think that that requires a little bit of work on our part as well, too, making sure that we're tracking and keeping track of that, as well as, I'm appreciative of the policy, um, the, the policy that states that it's part of the Business Advisory Committee, and there's a role there that needs to be paid. Interim Superintendent, uh, anything that you can, uh, share with us at this point about how we will make sure that, um, everybody has the ability to collaborate and work together productively?
I would like to just say that Hey, I'd like to just say that currently, we've entered into discussions with Premier on a really comprehensive partnership that's even an extension of this one as relates to our students, author twelve thousand five hundred. And I think that we have regular meetings now, uh, with Mike Rudin's team. I think we set the stage for doing the work, and so not just one meeting, not just the Business Advisory Committee, but we meet on a regular basis to have a really deep and meaningful relationship. Uh, Premier, currently, uh, they're the stars of our Students Senate Speaker Series, is that right, Tommy? That is correct. Uh, every, every, every month, we have Premier in the House, but more importantly, uh, Associate Superintendent Lisa Minor, myself, and the rest of the team are developing a, a comprehensive program that we'll submit to the board to say, hey, here's the work we're doing going forward in a really deep and meaningful way. And as it relates to UD, uh, I'm not a UD Law School graduate, nor did I attend UD. Well, I have a couple of classes there. But let me just say that, um, the work, uh, personally, I've worked with them on and off for almost twenty-five years, and I think the members of that team, uh, and the organization are, um, fundamental to what we do in Dayton Public, uh, from student teachers to, um, to other support spaces in curriculum and instruction, and now it looks like leadership and staff development training. So, we're, we're pleased to say right now, we're poised to continue these relationships and really deepen them.
Thank you.
Um, I think to follow up on that, Dr. Lawrence, I would say that I definitely want to lift up all the people on our side that have played a part in this, um, just for the board's knowledge and those in the community. Every piece of this agreement came out of the talks between our CRA committee, uh, representatives from the University of Dayton, representatives from Premier Health, and, uh, On Main. And I also want to give a big shout out to my guy Buddy LeChant, who was really there at every one of those meetings and back and forth and making sure we had those conversations. So, for the community's knowledge, also, we have not only the, um, Business Advisory Committee, but we had a CRA Committee that works but we had a CRA committee that works to look at all of these agreements that come along our way. And this was the only one that really came our way the last year. And the members on that committee last year were myself, Ms. Wick, and then former board member Dr. Pickett. And so from the beginning, there was just a blank slate with what does this look like? And I'm just happy to see that all of these things really came out of formatted discussions. And Dr. Lali was there, Treasurer Abrahah was there to really look at what did we already have? So I think that was one of the pieces, to look at what did we already do? Because I think it would have, it would have hurt us to ask for things or talk about things that we didn't know what was being done. So I really appreciate the process of really going back through and saying, what currently do we have with UD? What do we have with premier? If we did, did have it, is it still going on? What do we have moving? What is in the process of moving? What are we doing with fidelity? What can we step up with? And I think that really took almost some time to really say, this is what we have, because of the constant changing pieces, people coming out. You know, Mr. Riordan not being there at the beginning. So that part really took a while, and this really has been something that people on the board would, I think, would agree that this hasn't been the usual case when we have these agreements, and we have these conversations that come to us. And so I want to lift up everybody on our staff, everybody that did the work of going to look up those things, lift up former superintendent Lali, who was there from day one when we talked about this. So I want to say that's one of the ways where we also look at, how do we hold ourselves accountable? And with these kind of situations, is that we have that committee this year. Mr. Lacy is replacing Dr. Pickett on that committee. So there are also three board members that will be regularly meeting to update and see what's going on. And then also, one of the things that we talked about is reflected in the two pager with the convening every year between premier, between UD and DPS, to kind of see where we are with this process. So it's not something we want to just put out there and then hope it goes well. We want to regularly check in with things, and regularly check to see what's going on. So I want to say that's a lift that I definitely wanted to lift up, because it, it was no one person doing this. It was a, a room full of people constantly saying and back and forth with constant meetings, bringing in other board members. You know, board member Walker just coming onto the board, and Dr. Bailey being able to have those conversations and reaching out. So I think I just want to lift up everybody on the board as well, everybody, our staff, that really plays a part in these things that go on. And then I also want to lift up just the partnerships. And I will say, Dr. Spina, I'll say, you know, publicly, I have been able to see a difference in just the visibility in different parts of Dayton under your leadership, and I want to lift that up, and I appreciate that. And I think this is another continuation of us working to, to do those things, because we're all here. And we have to look at each other as partners if we're going to survive and what we do. And so I just want to thank everybody that really looks at our people and our students and staff in the same light as everybody else in this community, because of the great work they do. I see Dr. Goodwin.
Yes. You see how much more of a pleasant experience it is when you come talk to us? You know, it's not, it's not harsh, it's not, it's more inviting, because, you know, we like to be a part of that. One question that I do have for you, and if, I don't even know if you know, because your presentation kind of said the buildings that you were building are, you're looking are kind of the first of their kind. Do you know what the projected, the five percent projected amount actually comes out to be for us, that we would be taking?
As a projected, over the multiple years, yes, we, we have those projections.
Okay. Can we have those?
Yeah, absolutely, yeah. I think we, we've sent them on at one point, but yeah, absolutely.
Okay. You want to give me a ballpark of it? It's the public now, you know, I don't know, it's different over here.
I'm going to take a, a range. I, I think within the first thirty years, it's close to a hundred and twenty-five million, a hundred and fifty million? A hundred and fifty.
Feel good about that? You got it on those, look, look at the paper.
I had to go way back machine there.
Okay, and I, I appreciate that, because, you know, we talk about percentages, but you've got to know kind of what those numbers are, what they equate to, and the people that all seven of us answer to will ask one of us kind of what that is. So even just knowing that piece, which if there is actual tangible documents on those, please send those our way, because we'd like to see that. My other request is more so on us as a board, because there are, like, we've been burned in the past by other groups. Not necessarily you guys, when it comes to like these type of agreements. There's one in here, not saying that this is your intention here, but there are some agreements that we, the Board of Education has signed, that has led to like one type of the event over the course of the CRA. And I, the, the goal here is for this to be a partnership for us, for our students to benefit. I mean, the, the benefit to us for the loss of revenue from taxes is that there is some type of intangible offer to us. But just seeing that some of these things, like the career fair, that it's not, and here it's listed as A. A means could be in one time, but if it's a reoccurring thing, that is an opportunity for our kids to be able to participate in that. The, actually, my request to Board President Smith is that this goes through legal, and that legal makes sure that even though we all feel, we all want our best intentions, that contractionally, when we get down to the MOU, that that is actually represented in the written form, which will be controlling once we are all beyond this space. Because I don't think in thirty years, we'll all be in the same spot as when the agreement started. I definitely won't be.
I'm the youngest one here.
But I will not be.
I'm the youngest one here, just put that out there.
In thirty years, you're still going to be in your sixties.
I will say, Dr. Goodwin, glad to report that, I think I, I might, might know you from spending some time with you, and that is something that we've already done, and so our legal has been looking at this as well to make sure those kind of things are ready for us when we get a document sent over, so.
Look, that's great. I look forward to hearing the outcome of this meeting that you guys have tomorrow about these athletic directors and every aspect out of them, because it has been a tremendous expense to us in the, right now. And although, I mean, we, we need assistance, being able to not only match what our need is, but what our pockets can match, too. So I look forward to seeing what comes from those conversations, and what is to come next.
Appreciate that. Any other questions, comments? Ms. Wick?
Thank you. Thank you for your presentation tonight and coming out. I really appreciate it. This has been some exciting work for me. I've sat on this committee, super proud of this work, proud of our partnership with premier and UD, and the direction I see us all going. I know that board member Reiner brought up, you know, the responsibility, the onus of responsibility to drive these things consistently, you know, rests a lot on us. So very intentional about this work, when we set it up to make sure that it is reviewed annually through our business advisory. And the next piece of business advisory, we will be kicking off in the next couple of weeks, Joe. So that will get you all updated on all of that stuff, too. But honestly, just supersided about this opportunity and what we're going to create moving forward. I appreciate you all.
Anyone else?
I did. What, sorry. Was premier health and UD already a part of the business advisory before?
They have been, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? With that, we look forward to continued partnership. We will definitely make sure the board has any documents as we get them in as well. And like we answer from Dr. Goodwin's question, for those who did not hear, that has been for the board. Our next step has been connecting with our legal, and as well with On Main, because we want to make sure that all these things are not only above board, but are able to be by any agreement. So we will definitely get that back to the board as we get that information as it comes in. We appreciate you coming out. Thank you, and have a nice evening.
Go UD. Go UD, go Flyers.
Sorry.
Moving right along, Dr. Lawrence, can you let us know what your next presentation is?
Absolutely. This is kind of out of order a little bit, I'm just going to keep going in that space. And I'm going to bring up, or unless, Sharice, do you need these to be in order? Do you need these to be in order? Can I go to unhoused student? Yep, yep, yeah. So let's go to unhoused student, special presentation. I am really looking forward to this. Tells the story about Dayton Public Schools and, and our kids and what we do for some of our most at-risk students. And thank you for getting me together, Ms. Graham, unhoused. I'm going to stop using that word homeless.
Well, good evening, President Smith, board members, interim superintendent Dr. Lawrence, and Treasurer Abrahah. I am LaShawn Graham, Director of Federal Programs.
And I'm Christine Pruitt, the McKinney Vento Homeless Liaison.
So our presentation is really addressing the McKinney Vento Homeless Education Act, which is all the work that we do for our students who have been identified as being homeless, and breaking down those barriers to success. Next slide, please. So Ms. Pruitt was able to give us, you know, I think Christine might have been the first liaison that we've had?
The first one that served any time, long time. We had one that served a year, and then we had one six months, and then another year. But I've served for twenty-five years in a position, retired and came back.
So she has this wonderful history of McKinney Vento. And I'm going to, I don't like to usually read slides, but I think this is important for me to read. The McKinney Vento Homeless Assistance Act of nineteen eighty-seven is a federal law that provides federal programs for homeless shelter programs, for support services, transitional housing, and emergency shelter grants for the nation's homeless. Stuart B. McKinney, the man, was regarded by his peers as a fighter for the causes of the forgotten. And Bruce F. Vento worked alongside Stuart B. McKinney, and was co-author of the Stuart B. McKinney Homeless Assistance Act. The McKinney Vento Act, under the Every Student Succeeds Act, reauthorized in December of twenty fifteen by Title IX, Part A, strengthened the emphasis of the unique needs of and supports for unaccompanied homeless youth. Next slide, please. So McKinney Vento Act was in place, is in place to make sure that we are removing barriers for our children and our unaccompanied youth experiencing homelessness, so that they can enroll and participate in programs with the district without any barriers. So McKinney Act ensures that each child of a homeless individual and each homeless youth has equal access to the same free appropriate public education, including public preschool education as provided by other children and youth. There are several causes for displacement. Those are the words that we actually use, or displacement, or, what's the other word?
Displaced and transitioned.
So those causes for displacement could be is post-COVID challenges, eviction, unaffordable housing, domestic violence, substance abuse of alcohol and drugs, pushed out, and overage, and incarceration. So even though you'll see us using that word homeless throughout this presentation, we do have empathy for our families of our children, that we, when we interact with them, that we do refer to them as being displaced or transitioning, and as we're having those conversations. So we do have some nice facts for you, and did you know? All school districts are required to have a McKinney Vento Homeless Liaison. Unaccompanied youth can compete, can complete the FAFSA without a parent or guardian's financial information, and Ms. Pruitt hits right here, helps assist with that. Students experiencing homelessness can enroll without having required documents, because asking for them to have those documents upon enrollment is creating a barrier for them, especially if they have been displaced and been transitioning a lot. Students can remain in their school of origin while experiencing homelessness outside their school district. That is another thing to make sure that they have some continuity in their lives, that we work with the families to make sure the student can stay in the school of origin wherever they may be located. And that's one of the things that our homeless liaison works with. And there's no expiration date on receiving services while experiencing homelessness. Once students are identified for the school year, they're identified for the entire year, and have those same services and access to the things to help remove barriers. Dues and fees can be waived or paid, that's another barrier that we remove. And senior caps and gowns are at no cost to the student or family, another barrier that we remove. Next slide, please. So as the McKinney Vento Homeless Liaison, which is Christine Pruitt, these are some of the main responsibilities of the homeless liaison. They help identify, work with the enrollment center, to make sure that students, when they are enrolled in school, we can work with them to make sure that there's no barriers to keep them from being enrolled. Make sure that we have transportation for students. Ensure that they're part of an after-school program or summer program that we can offer to make sure that they have access to that, as well as manage all the aspects of the federal subaward, which currently we have two grants through the American Rescue Plan, American Rescue Homeless One and Homeless Two. Next slide, please. We also have a community outreach specialist, which is Joanne Richardson, who is not with us right now. But she also is in place to help assist the homeless liaison. She conducts home visits to school, visits to schools, shelters, homes, and community agencies, especially if we have an issue where students may have a lot of absences. She'll work with the truancy office to make those home visits, or visits to the shelters or wherever the students are, to see how we can get them back in school. We also, she's also responsible for making sure that the distribution of the homeless information. So every school and throughout the district and, and community, there must be some type of poster showing the access and information to students and families experiencing homelessness, and who they can contact. She also heads up the advisory committee. She provides awareness presentations to community partners, and creates and sustains racial relationships with all stakeholders, which is very important for the sustainability of this program. Next slide, please. Homeless list looks like you and me. We know that our families go through a lot, and homeless has many faces. Some of the families are staying in hotels, staying with other people following the loss of housing, staying in domestic violence shelters or transitional shelters, routing, rotating, I'm sorry, among many houses, staying in abandoned buildings, in cars, under bridges, et cetera, et cetera, residing in substandard housing. These are some of the experiences of some of our families. Next slide. So most of the, I think all of the transitional shelters are within Dayton Public Schools attendance area. And we have five of them that we work with on a regular basis. You've got St. Vincent de Paul, the Gateway Men's Shelter, YWCA Domestic Violence Shelter, Daybreak, Inc., and the Linda Vista Project. Next slide, please. By the numbers, we have to give you some notations, because our numbers have changed, because we have, they change routinely, from day to day, from week to week. So the children and youth identified within the DPS district is six hundred and seventy students. DPS students identify, four hundred and twenty-three. How many unaccompanied youth we have in Dayton Public Schools is thirty-two. DPS children from age zero to five is fifty-two. And then non-DPS children from ages zero to five is seventy-five. Non-DPS children from pre-K to twelve is seventy-five. Children at risk of experiencing homelessness due to eviction is a hundred and thirty-one, because there's enough fifty-three families. And students participating in our after-school program is twenty-five. Next slide. So the reason we continue to say homeless, because the McKinney Vento Homeless Education Act provides for us to find certain resources to help that students can stay engaged, so that we can remove barriers. And this is a list of some of the things that we are currently doing for our students who are displaced or transitioning. We assist with student enrollment, like I said, to make sure that those barriers have been removed. We help provide school transportation, so they can get back and forth to schools to, to remove that barrier as well. We provide medical, dental, and vision referrals, homework assistance, and summer programming, community resource referrals, housing and shelter referrals, advocacy for our displaced and transitioning families. Hygiene products, winter items, one-on-one school engagement, and there's so much more to whatever those barriers are. We try to make sure that we have something in place to remove those for those families. Next slide, please. So our homework assistant providers, we work with the local shelters, and we provide them with a DPS certified teacher to work with the students on homework, and to address math, and science, and reading, to make sure that we're helping them stay academically engaged. So currently, we have two homework assistant providers at St. Vincent. We are in the process of hiring two more, so we can have one at Linda Vista Project, the YWCA and Daybreak. The homeless assistance program actually started in January and will go until May twenty-fourth. And the fact that we're offering these services within the transitional shelters, that provides us with that in-kind services and support from those shelters. Next slide, please. Transportation is usually a big barrier for our families. So the McKinney Vento Homeless Education Act states that we must help them receive transportation to and from at school-based activities. And so a student experiencing homelessness... And so a student experiencing homelessness could attend the school of origin but live in another school district. That allows for that continuity, allows for us to remove that barrier and make sure that they can stay academically successful. Per the McKinney Vento Act, if districts are unable to agree upon a method of transportation for the student, each district responsible 50% of the transportation costs. So currently, as you can see, we have shared cost agreements with Middletown, Miami'sburg, North Ritz, Xenia, and Northmont School District to transport students that are outside of the quadrant or outside of the school district. We are currently in the process of planning and working with Chief Sheehy and Associate Superintendent Minor to plan for summer programming. The McKinney Vento program, or I would say that we're working with students at risk in general, is called GEAR, Get Excited About Reading. It's going to be for, is it eight weeks? It'll be eight weeks long, and you'll see that it's from eight to 3:30. That allows for when school's not in session, that our students have somewhere to go and spend time with, the first part of the day with reading intervention, and then we have those life skills and recreation in the afternoon. And it will be for grades K through eight, pre-K through eight, I'm sorry. Next slide, please. McKinney Vento has many fiscal resources to support the programming. The primary one is Title I Part A that we use as a set aside off the top of the grant to make sure that the program has the resources that it need and the staffing. The American Rescue Plan, Homeless One and Homeless Two, which we received during the COVID, during the COVID time, both of those grants' performance period ends as of June 30th. McKinney Vento subgrant, we do not currently have that grant, but right now is the time that we're going through the process of applying for it so that we can have those funds for fiscal years '25 through '27. Programming is, is a lot of in-kind services and donations from the community and private donors. Next slide, please. And we are DPS. Are there any questions?
Yes, sir.
Hello. I just want to say that this project is amazing. I've been homeless multiple times, and just seeing this opportunity for other students who might not have it like how I did, I had to tutor my own siblings, is amazing. And I just want to say thank you. And seeing it, seeing it being led by two strong black women is amazing. I just want to say thank you.
We appreciate that comment.
Always find a way to get to me, man. Find a way to get to me. I do want to echo those sentiments of, of just thank you. And I think for many in our community, we take, we take it for granted, what being unhoused is like, and we act like sometimes that it's some dire thing where it's the, the end result of a lot of bad choices. And in reality, I've seen, you know, sometimes we're just one relative away from being there, or one person that we can't lean on, or one friend that we can't call on, away from being in situations. And so I just want people in our community and want people in our district to, to really look at the humanity of everybody in our district. Every staff member, every student, every person here, we don't really know what they're going through. And I think one of the thing, key things in that slide is that, you know, it looks like you and I. It really does look like us. You know, sometimes people put on a, a hobray front that we just don't see. A lot of times, we don't see what's going on, and a lot of times, we have, which, to the numbers fluctuating, you have a lot of people that are just, don't know how to explain what they're going through, or know how to get those resources. So I would ask if, if Ms. Kincaid, if we can put some of those resources up following the board meeting as well, and just really go and share some of those things because there are a lot of people in our community that just need to know that there's resources out there. So I really appreciate that work. I will want to turn it over to the board for any questions, comments. I'll start with Mr. Walker this time. I think he beat you. Dr. Goodwin?
Let you go first last time.
Now, see, I'd say he let you, not see.
I did. Just a little bit. Thank you for the presentation. I really appreciate it. I actually had Ms. Richardson as my middle school in-school suspension teacher at Kaiser.
Ms. Richardson is amazing.
She is. My, my first question would be, how do students in the district end up being identified as homeless or these typical barriers that are placed on them and things like that?
Well, students that are experiencing homelessness are identified through the counselors, through a contact person that the building has identified as being the go-to person, the shelters, the student enrollment center, and just by self-identification, whether it's the parent or the student. So, and sometimes we get anonymous calls.
Thank you. And then, so with looking at the numbers, and it was children and youth identified within DPS district, and then is DPS students identified? Is that with the agreements with Middletown and things like that as far as the separation of that number? Or how does those two numbers, because they're different by hundreds, really?
Correct. So all of the transitional shelters, homeless shelters are located within Dayton Public Schools district.
Okay.
So we hold some accountability for those students because we have to provide services for them also. So the ones that are identified within the district, that encompasses charter school students we may identify because we have some blended families, where one kid may go to Dayton Public and three of the other kids may go to a charter. So that's in that number also.
Okay. Thank you. And then the last question that I had is, the start date with the homework assistance being January, when the school year starts in August, of how that separation occurs as well?
Well, what I'll have to say is that is, I returned to the district in October. Ms. Pruitt returned to the district in November. So with us being at the district after the start, we're pulling together the resources, looking at the funding to make sure that we can get everything in order. And so that's why it started so late.
But the, the program is a mandatory program, so it should have still already been in place prior to your arrival?
I, I don't know that it's a mandatory program, but it's in our past history that we've always tried that. But one of the reasons why we wanted to make sure that Ms. Pruitt was back was to make sure that we can bring the programs and services back up to the status quo.
Okay. And then last question for me. With the summer sessions, and this is always a big one for me, I see the seventh and eighth graders. Typically, they work in the summer. So would they be able to, let's say, students want to do the morning session but not the afternoon session, is that an option, or is it full, all-day session?
It is an option. We certainly hope that they do participate in the AM session, which is the academic portion. But it's not mandatory that they attend both sessions. If they're working, they can go to work. But usually, in a household, the entire family unit wants to participate in summer programming because the older siblings are courts, they get to the younger siblings. So usually, we don't have that issue.
Okay.
To say it on the rise.
Thank you so much.
Dr. Goodwin?
Thank you. A couple things. So the numbers here are, those are the identified, but, which means the numbers probably are higher of those who aren't identified, which is super, it's super depressing in multiple states here. For kids that are in foster care or group homes, do they have access to these resources as well?
They do. Title I also has to set aside funds for children in foster care, and students that are in group homes could either fall in either category of being part of McKinney Vento or under the foster care group. So the resources are there for all those students at risk to remove those barriers.
Okay. In the past, we've talked about, or we've heard, actually last year when we first start having people come present their budget to us, which I hope we do that again this year so we can see what's happening out here. I know one of the asks last year from the McKinney Vento team was about staffing. What's the staffing levels like right now in this program?
The staffing levels of this program is Ms. Pruitt and Ms. Richardson.
So we, now we doubled. It's up from one. That's still pretty sad, knowing that it's like 500-plus kids out here.
But I have to add that they are all, they are part of the Office of Federal Programs, so the rest of the team is all hands on deck for everybody to support one another as our own professional learning community. So we support each other.
Yeah, I hear you, but that's still stretching. That's like five of y'all now, though. That's still a low amount of individuals for a, a population that is going through the most dire times in their lives. It just seems like if we know that this is happening in our district and we know that in our population it is a, a barrier or a challenge that can potentially impact the growth model of where you go next in life, that if we had the opportunity to do something about it, then we should do more about it. Because those positions you just named, three of them, we just created, I think in October. Yeah, yeah. Because you just came, and then the other two that just got created at that point. And then there was only one person last year, so we, we grew by four people who still have four other jobs outside of this one. And that's just something as a board, because that's a challenge for us at this point now. I mean, you guys asked for funding and stuff, but for us to start really thinking about where our values are and what we need to help our students be able to be a student. Because, I mean, I couldn't even imagine how I could think about any of these other things if I didn't know where me or my siblings or my parents would be at tonight. I can tell you, this probably wouldn't be important to me. And, and that's unfortunate that young kids have to make those type of decisions. And, I mean, I'll say this, and it's been something that I've talked about with the board members since I came on the board. The, yes, there were some, some places listed in here that does youth homeless shelters, but, I mean, Daybreak is the biggest one, and it has less than 30 beds. And those beds are accounted for by different age groups. There's a, a serious issue in our community that no one can really take hold of yet, but it impacts us because the kids come to our schools here. And I think we have to start having a serious conversation about us going wider and deeper into the, the housing market for children. I mean, I talk about it all the time. We have this building that we're sitting in right now that we only use this room. Imagine if all that was dorms or some type of place to be able to house some of these children in our district. Imagine if we were even able to even cut into half of the students here. At a certain point, we got to just stop listening to presentations telling us about really, really hard work and the people who have to do it every day. And we have to make some impactful decisions to start changing those narratives. Because kids, I mean, we're a multimillion organization, like, I mean, multimillion organization here who invest in children's future. And if we aren't this frontline group here and starting to put more investment, like the fact that we went from one to two is nuts. And it, and I hope, again, when this budget comes up now, that you ask us for even more because you are literally touching people in their most vulnerable time in life. So I thank you guys for the presentation. Don't know if anything I said will make any difference. I'm gonna be up here on my side going, give them another person the same way we push for family engagement because you guys need it, and on the same, I'm gonna keep pushing. My board mates, too. We need to do something. Like, people need a place to live. If we have properties, if we have buildings, at a certain point, you got to go beyond what the initial mission was. I can't educate people if they don't, if they're not warm at night, if they don't have food in their belly. They can't even think about what we got going on. But thank you.
I don't want to disappoint you, Dr. Goodwin. We did not grow from one to two. We are at two still. We had Ms. Wilson last year who was working in the district, but I'm glad we did not go down from two to one.
It's even sadder that we still at the level that we at.
I will say that I think a lot of that is the, the work of being able to be ahead of these things. And I think, like, even with those, those funding things, that work is, it's a now work. So I think that's one of the things that we learned out of the budget presentation. Things is that a lot of that is a now work if we're going to create those spaces. I am happy to see Ms. Graham back. I hope you bring back some of the expertise in looking out for some of these grant programs, these grant opportunities. I definitely think there's a lot of growth opportunities in this space. I do have a couple of questions. One, with our counselors in the building, how often, Ms. Pruitt, are you able to really speak with them on some of the signs to watch out for? The, the conversations to have, like, how do we make people feel comfortable in having these conversations, knowing that even our counselors who are educated in having difficult conversations with, with students may not always be fully aware of the kind of situations that are going on in those spaces? So are you, or have you been able to have some of those conversations with our counselors, with people in the buildings to help them kind of have these kind of, kind of conversations to lead people to be comfortable to even come out and try to get these resources that we have?
So our unaccompanied youth, and the majority of those are at the high school level, and I meet one-on-one with each and every one of them.
Good.
Along with the counselor. So I recommend that we spend at least 15 minutes with each one of them. So that really works out well. They open up, and it's very hard for them to disclose that they're experiencing homelessness. And you all seem to get it, you know, the understanding of what's going on. And we do service a lot of DPS employees. You know, you have your, your parents, people who don't work over the summer. We have families that just buy missing a paycheck. It, it can happen to any of us. The people who experienced a tornado didn't know that they would experience homelessness. So it affects everybody, especially our high schoolers. And I tell everybody, just because that person comes to work first thing in the morning and the first one there, doesn't always mean that they love what they're doing. Sometimes they come in there first so that they can take a shower, change their clothes before anybody else gets there. And they're the last one to leave because they have nowhere to go. And I'm talking about parents, staff, unaccompanied youth. So when we start looking at homelessness today, it's not the man pushing the car down the road anymore. It's us or somebody we know. So that's my soapbox. But I did want to share a couple of numbers with you that weren't on the slides. So our highest count for high schools are Belmont and Dunbar for high schoolers. Middle school, the Belmont seventh and eighth graders, and Wagner. The elementary level is Bell Haven, Kaiser, and Ruskin. So that's where the majority of our displaced kids are, at those grade bands. And right now, for unaccompanied youth, we have 32 right now. And the number of six, seven, it is very low. It's low because the count didn't start really until November. So we already had lost three months of counting. This is the lowest number we've had since probably 2015. Usually, at this point, we're at about 850. And at the end of the school year, we usually rise to about 1,100. So we have, we usually have a school building, you could say, for the displaced youth. So it's real.
Yes, ma'am. I know Dr. Bailey had something. I just want to ask real quick, for those who would want to assist with the McKinney Vento program, if they have things, they want to donate, what would be the best way for them to go about that?
Again, I think our unaccompanied youth need mentors because a lot of them are out on their own, and they don't have that adult support. So mentors for unaccompanied youth, males and females. As far as donations, the money's in the funding we receive right now is covering the majority of things that's needed, along with the huge donations from the district and the community. However, crisis comes for families when they do find housing and don't have anything to put in there. Beds, you know, small appliances and things like that. Because once they locate housing and don't have the basic needs, then, you know, how far are they going to sustain their housing?
Appreciate that. Dr. Bailey?
Yeah, that, that was one of my questions, too. So along with that, so if somebody wants to donate, who, who do they get in contact with?
If it's monetary, it could go to the treasurer's office, and they'll send out a donation letter and account for the funds that come in. If it's material things... Uh, if it's material things, they can be donated to the McKinney Vento program at three fifty-four Mount Street because we're located at Mount Street Academy. Or they can bring it to the administration building. Uh, I do want to stress that if they bring things, bring new things. Don't bring anything that you wouldn't want your own child to have, whether it's clean or not. If you wouldn't, if, if you wouldn't give it to your child, your grandchild, your niece or nephew, don't bring it. Because we want them to have the same things that your children have.
Thank you. Um, for the summer program, is this the, uh, because I wasn't clear, is this the first year or you've had the GEAR program before?
Prior to COVID, it was every year.
It was every year? How does, what does that look like?
So you sleep, um, from eight until noon. It's academics and there's a curriculum that they do. Usually it's reading or math. In the afternoon, it's from twelve-thirty to three-thirty. And, uh, we contract that with, uh, a different agency where they have, um, health of wellness, recreation, life skills and music and arts and things like that.
So with that, uh, health and wellness, do you have like, uh, counselors or anything like that that help you all out as well to help with their mental?
We haven't added mental health as a part of that uh, because we wanted this year to try to have a parent boot camp and we wanted to start with the parents first. Um, we're still in the process of building that. But no, we haven't added mental health as a part of it.
Is it something that you're even thinking about?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Mr. Lacy?
Thank you very much for the, for the presentation. And, and my only question was to help me understand, um, how the money flows through. And I, I was gonna ask the treasurer. Um, and she can answer this at the finance committee meeting. Is that the, all the Title I, Part A, A R, A R P and the McKinney Vento, uh, subgrant, how do they flow through our fund system? Or what funds are those in our system? But if that's, I mean.
I can bring it to the finance committee.
I appreciate it. And thank you very much.
And I can share that with you too, because with the Title I, that's Fund five seventy-two.
Okay.
And that comes with this part of our consolidated grant. A R P Home is one of two. It's a Fund five oh seven because it's part of the COVID relief funds.
Five what?
Five oh seven.
Five oh seven.
It's part of the COVID relief funds. And then, uh, the donations is O one nine fund.
And the subgrant?
The subgrant, we are actually, we do not currently have it.
Okay.
We're in the process now that the application is opening up shortly. So we are in the planning stages of completing that application to see if we can, um, be awarded those funds because it is a competitive grant.
Okay. And then, does that go like to the miscellaneous grants or something?
It's, it'll be a Fund five seven two because it falls under Title I.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Walker, I think was first, then Dr. Goodwin.
So without, without the fund now, what's that dollar amount that's not there? And how is that being covered with those dollars not being there?
We have Title I and then you have those COVID relief funds that we've had for the last few years. So that helps pick up some of that deficiency for not having the McKinney Vento grant. Um, we'll apply for it again, but even then, those funds are not substantial. So Title I will still support McKinney Vento because it's necessary and it's required.
Okay, but with the subgrant not being here now and with the two ARP programs going away, how will, so McKinley Vento Title I will cover everything that's missing?
Title I will cover all the expenses that need to be covered for McKinney Vento if we do not get the subgrant and after the ARP funds are away.
Okay. Thank you.
Dr. Goodwin?
Can I just have a chart of all the stuff you just said to Mr. Lacy? Because it was a lot to follow. And it, and can you come to the finance meeting on Thursday? And we could talk about it again there with a color-coded chart. Seriously, no, seriously, can I have a chart?
And you have to realize too, that most of the funds that fund through the district, um, under the Elementary Secondary Education Act are there to support students at risk. So because of our district's low in, you know, our, our low income percentage is so high, all of our students are considered at risk. So McKinney Vento is a set aside off the top of Title I to make sure that we have those allocated funds for that programming as well as for foster care.
So it was a yes on the color-coded chart? And if it's a lot, if it can be like a little bigger so that we can look at it together. That's all I have. Thank you.
Anyone else? See nothing else? I want to thank you too for coming out and also want to thank you for everything that you do for the district. Appreciate you.
Thank you.
Dr. Lawrence?
Uh, Ms. Graham, Ms. Pruitt, thank you so much. Um, upon Lisa Miners return, uh, these were two of the first calls we made. We welcome you back with open arms. All right, on to College and Career Tech, uh, State of Career Tech with our new Career Tech Director, Matt Fulkerson. Good to see you. Love the shoes.
Raise that up just a little bit. Thank you, President Smith. Thank you, Vice President Wick. Um, thank you, Board. Thank you, uh, Madam Treasurer Abrahah, and thank you, Inter Superintendent Dr. Lawrence. I'm excited to be here tonight. I'm willing to discuss the state of our career tech here at Dayton Public Schools. And then maybe have a little ask or request there at the end on how you could possibly not only help career tech, but also help, um, all of our students here at Dayton Public Schools. I am Matt Fulkerson and I am the current Director of, um, Career Tech here at Dayton Public Schools. Slide please. So the big question these days are equity and who do we serve? Um, so the students we serve here at Dayton Public Schools are most visible by Ponant's Career Technology Center and Meadowdale Career Technology Center. But we also have programs, three programs at Stivers School for the Arts. And we also have CTE programming at all of our middle schools. It's important to note that a CTE student doesn't get that designation though until they start their program at either Stivers, Meadowdale or Ponant's. So at the middle school, they're not considered a CTE, uh, concentrator or anything of that nature. They're, they're just taking some CTE programming. Next slide, please. So the breakdown, you can see up there, we have twelve career fields out of the fifteen possible career fields that the state of Ohio allows for us to have. Next year, we will be expanding that to thirteen. We have twenty-three unique programs. Um, we actually have twenty-five, but we have Allied Health and Pre-Nursing, one at Ponant's, one at Meadowdale. And we also have Biotech and BioMed, one at Ponant's and one at Meadowdale. So they're not unique in that case. Edwin Joel Brown and Wagner are currently in a pilot program set up last year where they have four programs for the seventh and eighth grade. Uh, it would be a business, it would be engineering project Lead the Way. It would be a health science and it would be an agricultural field. Then at Wright Brothers and at Belmont, they have two potential programs there with a Career Connections course and a Project, Project Lead the Way course. Um, next slide, please. So what does the state say about the CTPD or the Career Technical Planning Report? It's also very important to note that we do not own all the kids that are on the CTPD report card. There is a small section of students that take career tech programming at a community or charter school within our CTPD. So they also impact the report card, but we do own the vast majority of it. Um, we are a three-point-five stars out of five stars in the state of Ohio, which is a designation of meet standards. Although proud of that, we plan to expand upon that and go further in the future. Um, next card, please, or next slide, please. So drilling down just a little bit, um, this is the assessment piece of the CTPD report card. Um, there's two pieces of this. There's the technical skill attainment and there's also the performance index. The technical skill attainment is what we know as the web exam. The web exam is the career tech OST per se. So as a student in the high school takes a, a math or an English OST, this is our OST. The, the lowest hanging fruit to improve this particular score would be that participation rate. We are always shooting for that one hundred percent. If we don't hit one hundred percent, it's an automatic ding. We always want to try and test all of our students. We're also working to, um, align all of our competencies to, and we have worked on this, but align our competencies to the blueprint that the state puts out for our web exams. That doesn't mean that we're teaching to the test, but we're making sure that we are hitting all those particular competencies so that we can increase those technical skill attainment scores. The performance index, on the other hand, is the academic piece and that is the district. That is not Ponant's, Meadowdale and Stivers, but that's the district performance index, uh, index score. Uh, the way we're working on this is Dr. Ramel, the previous Director of Career Tech, um, completed, uh, connecting all of the CTE competencies to the math and the English competencies or standards as they're known as so that we could start having a common thread and having a common language in our classrooms. So that way, when a student, when a student was in an ICTE classroom, we could talk about a particular topic of English while we're teaching our curriculum or a particular math, because math kind of goes through literally everything. So we, um, are trying to help increase that performance index scores through that cause. Next slide, please. Where we are particularly proud, but once again, not settled, is our current graduation rate as a CTPD. We are at a ninety-one point two percent for the four-year and a ninety-two point five percent for the five-year. It's also important to note that the four-year is linked to the class of two thousand and twenty-two and the five-year rate is linked to the class of two thousand and twenty-one. So these are a few years, few years in the rear. Um, so we, we never get to see the actual data as it is. So we will get the class of two thousand and twenty-three in next year's report card. Um, next slide, please. The other piece of this is every pathway has their own report card. And it's called, we affectionately call it the QPR because we like to shorten everything in education, but it is the Quality Program Review. Each program has those three particular things that they are looking at. And if a program fails one of those three, they are considered non-compliant. So it's either pass it all or not compliant. Many of these pieces are in the, uh, CTPD report card as well. The technical skill attainment, which we talked about, the post-program. But the piece where we're really focusing in on now is this work-based learning component. Um, the state requires that fifteen percent of our concentrators um, must get two hundred and fifty hours to pass that particular area of the QPR. We have been held, um, um, non-harmful or non-harmless, um, for this particular thing uh, because of COVID. So the state gave us kind of everybody in the state that. But this year, our current seniors are going to be held to that. So it doesn't affect the, although a, a pathway to graduation, it doesn't affect our, uh, our students per se, but it does affect the QPR for our individual pathways. Next slide, please. So, you know, data, data is great, but I've heard multiple times that we're more than just a test score. There's real faces to our students and they're doing more than just a paper and pencil test. Because that's what the web exam is, is a, is a computer test that is all multiple choice. And if it's a normal year, which we call, um, you know, usually every four years is a normal year, um, you get forty questions. And then if you are in a review year, it's ninety questions in an hour. So that's a lot of questions for our kids to be taking, um, at a particular time. So here are some of the major successes, successes along with all the other pictures. You can see our advanced manufacturing program. They built bridges out of popsicle sticks and then put weights on top of them to see how much weight they could hold. And they, they held way more weight than I thought that they could hold. Our digital, uh, design class at Meadowdale created, designed and printed holiday paper this year for people to use, which I thought was phenomenal. And then our gaming tech, um, you can see there, working on creating a character for her project. Just some of the amazing things that some of our students are doing here in, uh, the RCTPD or whatever tech. Next slide, please. So we are dedicated to what we call the three Es. The three Es for us are at the end, and that's where that is, the idea of going through, to and through graduation. Our job isn't done when we get the kid across the stage. Our job is done when we get our kids to a livable, sustainable family wage. Not just a livable wage, but a family wage, because we want our, we want our students to be able to have those families and live here in the Dayton area. So what do we do? The three Es. We want every kid that leaves the CTE or even Dayton Public to either hit the enroll, the employ or the enlist area. Those are our three Es. We're constantly working to try and make sure that our students have the skills needed to hit the individual working areas. We've been working with Premier, we just had a meeting with Premier today to get some of our full bottomy students over to the, um, to the agency over here, um, I just forgot the name. Compunit up here by, on seventy-five today to try and get some of those students in. And they have twenty-eight openings. We have less than twenty-eight, so we need to get our kids there. The big area, like we said, is the work-based learning. And my ask is, is when we start going into private conversations with these companies, asking them to do things for us, we need to have conversations with them on setting aside internships and or paid positions for our students while they're in schools. Not just for CTE. I, I know I'm the CTE Director and I'm supposed to watch out for that, but it's for all of our students. That's, that's what I'm here for, is to look out for all as we start to expand upon this. We need to try and get these livable waged, family sustaining jobs. And the model that we have is Centennial. Um, Ms. Clark, who, um, recognized this when we brought in Centennial, she sat us down, myself and my great, uh, work-based learning specialist, Megan O'Toole. We sat down with them and started talking about what this looks like. And how do we get our IT kids that are in CTE and outside of CTE for, per se? Um, we were talking about CTE. How do we get them into these jobs when they're juniors, when they're sophomores, when they're freshmen? Because we can start building on those two hundred and fifty hours. I told you guys about the fifteen percent, meaning two hundred and fifty. We can start getting those hours as early as the freshman year. Um, so when can we start doing that? We don't want to wait until their senior year and try and get all those two hundred and fifty hours because we're also working on the graduation and how can we support getting those kids to that stage? And we've created a, um, a tracking document that can identify this as early as the sophomore year and who's on track and who's not. So if we can tell at the sophomore year, someone's not on track, then we can start looking at these other graduation pathways. Work-based learning is one of those. So with the help of, uh, Ms. Clark, we've sat down and we're starting to work through that model for our, our IT students to come into Sentinel when they, they jump on board and they would actually start hiring our kids to get real-life work. And what that does for them is, is then they get a student that they can try to, not try, they're gonna work with that student to bring it to their model so that when they do graduate, they hit that other E, that they can employ them immediately. Because now they don't have to recruit them, which is costly. Then they don't have to train them. They've already got the training that they need because they were here in sight and they can just move right into that career seamlessly. The final shout-out before I give you guys some questions, I would be remiss if I didn't bring this up. Um, we have a bunch of CTSO competitions going on right now. Um, and this is another chance for our students to compete, to show their skills, their, their chances to go out into the workforce. They compete at different, um, skills within their pathway. Our BPA, which is the Business Professionals of America, um, competed in early January, right when the snow was happening. So we were very worried about that in transportation, but we got them there, we got them back. And twenty-two of our kids won at the regional level and are now going to the state level in March. Today was the HOSA competition, which is for our healthcare professionals. And we sent, I last checked, the last text message I got, we have eleven kids going to the state competitions. We have kids that know their skills. We have kids that are ready to go. We have kids that are ready to be employed. Um, and that's very, very exciting for the future of Dayton Public Schools and the CTE Department. Next slide. So with that, I'll open it up to you guys and give you a little taste of, uh, the state of CTE, but give you kinds of questions to ask me some questions.
Uh, first off, I want to say thank you and I want you to be comfortable with doing that. I think I will speak for myself, but I don't think I've seen anybody else on the board be against that. We want people to come up and be honest and say, you know, what, what are our recommendations? That's really what we are. We're a group that hears recommendations. So I really appreciate you coming up and saying this is something we see. Um, this is something we see a need for. And I definitely want anybody else that comes up before us to really, you know, advocate for your programs. I think anything short of, you know, personal attacks on people in the district and demeaning people is, you know, that's out. Everything else, I do think you're lifting up good things. I will ask also if you can give that information to, uh, Ms. Kincaid. And Ms. Kincaid can share that out. Um, I see our friend, Ms. McClory from Dayton Daily News here. I think making sure she gets that information. I think those are the kind of things that we want people to see. Um, making sure people see that. One of the things we talk about in this district is how do we present ourselves? People need to see those programs. People need to. People need to see what our kids are doing. People need to see our kids succeeding and excelling. So I want to appreciate that. Before I have any other questions, I always like to kick it off to the board. I think I see Mr. Walker, Mr. Lacy. Can I start down there with my fellow Meadowdale Lion?
Okay. I just want to ask, because I know this happened to one of my fellow students recently. Is there any way that we're implementing, like, students' how-to interview? Because you can have all the skills imaginable, but once you actually get interviewed and you say the wrong things, or you might accidentally use profanity, now you don't have a job. So is there anything going on with that?
Quick question. So we just went to a conference in Austin this last week, and we discussed this exact same thing. We're going to start, we have a bunch of mentors that are in our district. So, you know, the teachers that I've been in, they've had those conversations. But we need to start connecting our students who are getting ready to go out and possibly apply or have an interview with a company to be able to sit down with a dedicated time to train our students on how to proceed with an interview and possibly throw questions and make it as meaningful and as lifelike as we possibly can so that our students are prepared for those opportunities.
Thank you. Okay, so I guess I'll just go then. You know, I was waiting on the president to, thank you for this, I really appreciate it. So my first question is something that I hear from students a lot. Any discussion on a barber pathway? This is a constant thing that continues to come up.
Okay, so I just, I literally just had a conversation with one of our high school CTE principals about that. We, I have just sent out an email to the state of Ohio to get more clarification on barbering. What I do know about barbering is that it requires more hours than cosmetology. Cosmetology requires 1,500 hours throughout the student's pathway to be able to get licensed. Barbering is more than that. And it's very difficult, in the constraint that we have, to be able to get the hours needed to get to barbering. I'm reached out to the state of Ohio to find out, because one of our high school principals has somebody that would be interested in housing some of our students. So could we count those hours when students aren't in school? But with that individual, could we count those hours? If so, then we would love to add barbering. Cosmetology is one of our most applied-for positions, and we would love to be able to open up another position, kind of like that, to pull in some more of those students.
Perfect, thank you. My next question would be along the lines of the staffing with regards to Meadowdale's nursing program and things like that, because I remember that being an issue. And didn't I know where that was now, if that program is off to an actual start? Or is it still a long-term subsituation, or?
So we have hired an individual. There was a few things in the hiring process that delayed that. We had hired her, but then we had to keep holding off. And so she came in right before the break, and she's hit the ground running with our pre-nursing students there at Meadowdale. So we now have the full two teachers. So that way, we can work through and make sure that they're getting their credentials, like the STNA and phlebotomy and EKG there.
Perfect. Next thing would be, with regards to the students in these career pathways, has there ever been any thought of students actually doing things that the board ends up spending money on? Prime example for me would be the attendance T-shirts. I think that could have been something that students could have did for their respective buildings and designated that fund, funding to like the senior class fund or that class fund or something like that. So any discussion on that?
We've had no discussion on that, but we'd be open to anything. We have played with our schedule just a little bit and moved when juniors and sophomores, because the junior year of the CTE program is the toughest year. And it was generally first and second bell when we would tend to have issues with students being there. So we have moved that program to the sixth and seventh bells. But I would say that any discussion on helping with attendance, we would definitely want to be a part of that table and have those conversations.
Yeah, for me, I was looking at, I mean, we have a lot of content creator students, a lot of students that are small business owners already with their own teacher business, or they do IT work and things like that already. May not have the expertise. But really, how we'd be more intentional with them doing work inside the district and how that can equate two hours for their program and things like that.
Oh, I see. So we have, so we have six buckets in the state of Ohio. I apologize, I misunderstood your question. So we have six buckets that fall into the state of Ohio that count for work-based learning. One of them is a school enterprise. So one of the big programs that use school enterprise is culinary. Culinary is making things, they can cater events for literally anybody. They do a wonderful job. But we also have our graphic arts that makes the products that are there at our Ponants. They have a shop right out front in the building, they make those. Our robotics engineering, they made Christmas ornaments or holiday ornaments, whatever you want to call them. Gift paper. So yes, if there's an opportunity for our students to do something within our school, produce something in our school and fundraise, then we're all for it, because it is something that we can count for that 250 hours towards work-based learning. And we are taking advantage in a number of our programs.
Perfect, thank you. And then the, I would say the collaboration with your side and then the workforce navigator side on the middle school level and high school level, how that may work. And I know with that role, like the partnership with ESC and Learn to Earn of getting you those internships and those conversations at the table and things like that.
Yeah, we're constantly having those conversations. At the middle school level, what we're trying to do is we're trying to make our students aware of the opportunities that they have for CTE. So that way, if they were wanting to join a CTE program, then they can apply and we can get them in. You know, a lot of times, what fuels it is the name, Ponants or Meadowdale. And kids apply because it's Ponants or Meadowdale. But we really want, not that we won't take those students in, because we'll educate anybody. But we really want to make sure that we're getting those kids that have a desire in one of the programs that we currently have, getting them in there so that they can be successful. And then helping them, because as I always tell my teachers, you know, I'm just the talking head. They're the experts. I'm just there to knock down the walls and the barriers for them, to make sure that our students have what they need and what they need so that they can educate our students and make them successful. So the other thing is our teachers empowering them, and we have, to have those conversations with our students about the careers and the different types of careers. So for example, pre-nursing, they go into that program and they're thinking just pre-nursing. But the health field is vast. So still having those conversations with our students of, okay, but you're in pre-nursing, but here's what you can do, and here's what you can do, to make sure that our students are successful.
Perfect. Then the last thing will actually be to Dr. Lawrence. I appreciate the work of our Career Tech side. And hopefully, this year for the school board conferences, we showcase a lot of this work there. I think Dayton Public Schools, we do a lot of great work, we just do not tell our story. So I would look forward to that conference this November and our students being on showcase.
Consider it done, and we're already submitting proposals to the other conferences like OASBE. Yeah, FASSA, yeah, we want to get out there.
Appreciate it.
Mr. Lacy?
Thank you, Mr. President. At a minimum, couldn't you have named the programs?
Yeah, I could totally name out the programs for you. I just didn't want to know if you guys wanted me to have all that down on a?
Were you told you only have 10 slides or something?
Just be brief, right? So at Meadowdale, we have advanced manufacturing, we have pre-nursing, we have exercise science, we have digital design, information technology, gaming technology, biotech, which will become surgical tech next year, which we're really excited about that. Not that biotech's going away, but bio med, I mean, sorry, but surgical tech. And we have business entrepreneurship. At Stivers, we have photography, we have digital cinema, and we have theatrical design and production. Very art-centered, of course. And then at Ponants, I'm going to go down our hallways. We have graphic art and design, media arts. Our brand-new program this year, Farm Tech. We have another brand-new program this year, EMT. We have business finance. We have criminal justice. And then our blue hallway, we have biotech. We have allied health, dental. And then down our burgundy hallway, which is just red to me, but they say burgundy, is culinary, cosmetology, engineering, construction, and autotech. And then we're looking to expand next year into ECE, Early Childhood Education. And that would be at our Rosa Parks location, with the idea that it wouldn't just be for Meadowdale or Ponants, but it could service all of our Dayton Public Schools. So we could get them there and then get them back to take their academics. And then also looking to expand into vet tech, which has got a huge ask as well.
And could you, how about the middle school program?
So our middle school programs, we're going to expand upon as well. We're going to take all those four programs, those four pilot programs that we talked about at Edwin, and we're going to move them into Wright Brothers next year as well. So that those, at least those three standalone buildings have the exact same thing. It's going to probably look just a little bit different, because right now, they are on a quarterly rotation. So that's very hard to try and get that big realm of ideas in a quarter. So next year, we're looking to expand it to a semester. So a senior, wow, at the middle school level. A seventh grader may get business and get agriculture, but then in the eighth grade, they would be expanded to then the health and into engineering. Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Yeah.
Dr. Goodwin, I presume?
Yes, sir. Thank you for the presentation. It was good to hear that you identified. One of the things I heard most from some of the teacher at Ponants over the last year is that competing for the internship hours is difficult when students have the opportunity to actually go to work. So to hear that you know that that problem exists and that we're working to make those actual paid internships, I think is a step in the right direction, because we're going to continue to lose when a student has a chance to have the opportunity to make actual income over work experience. What were the three Es again?
Oh, sorry, it was enroll, employ, and enlist.
So is entrepreneurship ever considered on that table? Because just the generation I'm in and the one that's coming beyond me, entrepreneurship is more, I mean, it's a way of life. It's a way, a lot of ways that people go into now, where those three may not be a success for, are a goal of someone if they are in a major where I'm going to try to do this on my own first. But just, do we even measure anything in entrepreneurship for individuals who have shown that desire to go into business for themselves?
So we do have the business entrepreneurship program at Meadowdale. And we do, by law, have to do a six-month follow-up. So that was part of that post-program placement. So after, six months after graduation, we do have to follow up with our entrepreneurship students and ask them, what are you doing? Are you employed, which could be entrepreneurship? Are you enrolled? Are you enlisted? And we're like crossing our fingers, you know? And a lot of our students are doing exactly what they need, but just don't say that you're sitting on your mom's couch, like eating, you know, potato chips and video games here. But totally, after you said that, I was like, whoa, we should change it to the four Es and add entrepreneurship onto that phase.
Okay, that's good. My question, I have a, with the CTE program line, do you guys cross over at all the CCP program?
So in, okay. So Ms. Gail and I have had this conversation quite a bit. When our students take a web exam, they have what's called a C tag. And that C tag, if they pass the web exam, it's an automatic college credit. We call it a C tag, but it is CCP credit. When they go to Sinclair, they're getting access to that. We are looking into expanding CCP credit at our Ponants, Meadowdale, and Stivers campuses for those particular people. And then we are also looking at how could CTE support the non-CTE buildings? So where we do have CCP at Belmont, Thurgood, Dunbar, making a track, an allied health CCP track. And at the end, where we could come in is pay for a senior-only credential, where they could get access to like the STNA or something along that line so that we're more encompassing of all of our students.
That's good to hear. Some of the complaints I hear from parents who, when they find out later that right now, while their child is enrolled in our district, that we would actually pay for them to be in college, and then they get a little frustrated going, I thought I put them in the best school here, but I wasn't made aware that they could have also taken advantage of Sinclair. Like if I'm going into, I want to be a nurse. Sinclair actually just started a four-year nursing program, so you could have got two done with us, or even more if you did that one. But just knowing that those connected pieces, the individual, like we just talked about the entrepreneurship piece of it. The individuals going into cosmetology most likely will start their own shop at some point. So knowing that they need some business and our accounting classes and that that is an opportunity for them, it may not be a part of their pathway right now. But knowing that because you are in the district, you get these available to you. It's just, I hate to see when people feel like they got cheated or they missed out on something because they thought they were doing one thing and no one told them that this was also an option to you. So I hope to see that crossover piece more when you see our kids who are ready to try to make that jump of, I do want to do my pathway, but I see I'm going on to a two- or four-year university, and I'm ready to start that here because I'm showing that I'm ready. I want to do that, and it's no cost to them. So I just hate to see people miss those opportunities.
If I could answer that, we have, our partnership was with Sinclair, of course. And Sinclair has been coming in, ever since I've been here, and I've been in the district for four years. They've been coming in with our help, and we have been enrolling our students into the Tech Prep Consortium. And when we have those conversations with the students on the benefits of the Tech Prep Consortium, students who complete a CTE program are given a $3,000 scholarship to Sinclair. It is last dollars. And they are given buy-one-get-one, BOGO as they call it, for the first two summers out of a CTE program. So we do have those conversations on, if this is something that you want to do, but you need further education, you can go that way. Or for even, if this is something that you decided that you don't want to do, well, now you can go to school with some money and with some buy-one-get-one and go into an area that you want to go with as well. So we have those conversations with our students.
I think that's great. I also don't want them to miss off on the opportunity that right now, starting as young as the seventh grade, if you can handle it, you can go to school right now, no cost. It's great to see parents who have kids leave here with some college completed or even those who have gone on to achieve the associate degree, knowing that their child didn't start off their career in student debt because it wasn't a reality for them to pay for it. But I think that's great, too. The Meadowdale program, is this the third or fourth year of it as a CC?
I came in the district four years ago during COVID. We opened the building, and I say that tongue-in-cheek. We opened the building during COVID, which really wasn't. But the program started in the 2020-2021 school year. And they've been going, so four years now of what we're at at Meadowdale?
Okay, can you just share a little bit of the strategy to try to really attract more individuals to the offerings at that location? Because I see that the population is significantly lower than the Ponant CTC program.
So we have some building constraints at Meadowdale. So we have a capacity for our particular programs. We wanted to expand there. But what we try to do is we meet with our BACs, our individualized BACs. We look at the state data, and we start looking at where the in-demand jobs are and what our students are interested in. And we try to pull in those programs. Right now, there is no way we could bring a program into Ponants. So all new programs, when we have room, are been going to Meadowdale with the idea that these are what students have been asking for. So that's why, you know, vet tech is coming. We've heard a lot about ECE, although that won't be personally at Meadowdale. And then we have a overpopulation or oversubscribed in our pre-nursing program. So that's why we're moving the biomedical over to surgical tech. Because then that would be, the idea is to make that kind of an academy, and we can expand the amount of students that are in our health tech. And then their senior year, they will pick a path. Do I want to go the STNA route? Do I want to go the phlebotomy route? Do I want to go the surgical tech route? So we're constantly trying to look at what the data is telling us and what programs are in demand so that we can move forward and get more students' interest into that building.
Okay, and as you guys are looking at that as well, are you, it's kind of the plan, are even looking at to remove duplication of programs that are offered at other places in our district? Because I know like the biotech that you just talked about, so Thurgood also has, or had, I don't know if they still do have it, they have biotechnology as well. But now you're pulling and making people choose between STEM or CTE. And, I mean, we're competing for the same group of children in our district. And there are a couple other dup- there are a couple of other duplicates, which I can't wait till we get that program studies to see what's happening in the non-CTE schools as well. But just some of those duplicate programs, because I believe there are a couple duplicates between Ponets and Metodale right now as well.
Uh, currently this year, yes. Next year, it will just be the pre-nursing and the allied health program.
Okay.
Um, but yeah, so when looking at duplicates, we, we want to make sure that we're expanding and getting as many programs across the many career fields as we have. I think the bio, I might be mistaken, but I think the biotech at Thurgood is in addition this year. I could be mistaken. So, you know.
This is second year.
Okay. So well, that's kind of where, okay, we have biomed, we have biotech, and we have then a biotech at Thurgood. Let's switch and let's look at getting a teacher for the surgical tech. So we've, we were moving for that. I also had something else on my brain. But I guess, oh, and then the bio, biotech program at Ponets, we're going to switch it from a medical side of biotech, and we're going to move it more towards an agriculture. And everyone thinks crops and all that, that's not where we're going. We're working to create a partnership with, and we have, with the City of Dayton Water and working on a grant, which we submitted, to try and get some money to work to fill that gap at the City of Dayton Water Department with our particular students. And once we fill up the gap at Dayton, then the area communities as well.
Are we also working with Central State? Because I know in that field, they're one of the leaders.
Um, I'll have to get back with you on that. I'm not sure.
Okay. I have two more questions for you. With the middle school programs, how are you guys testing the success of them since this was their pilot year?
So what we're, what we're looking at is the number of students that are going into those programs. So the way we came up with those programs was last year, we used the U-Scienced data, and that was what was telling us that our students were interested in those particular programs, either interested or had an aptitude. Those were the big four. So then we're going to start looking to see, all right, how many of those students in our Edwin and in our Wogaman have applied to one of those four programs, either at Metodale and/or Ponets? They're currently in the application process now, so we wouldn't have that data yet. But I would, once I have that, I would definitely be looking at it and seeing how we tweak that, or how do we strengthen it.
Okay. And my final question for you, I did see the, I believe it was the business students who entered the Microsoft contest in the district. Is tho, are those contracts only restricted to kids in that program? Because I know at a couple of other schools in the CCP program, they have the, I think it's called business development, which requires you to go through all the Microsoft suites, which we could have had students at other schools actually compete in those things, but they're not off, these type of things aren't offered to them.
Um, so if you're talking about the CTSOs, those are required for career tech, but nothing stops the district from offering a CTSO to a, a student that is taking a business course at Thurgood, Metodale, or, sorry, Thurgood, Dunbar, or Belmont. So they could totally join those programs. There's a fee to that, and we pay that fee for the career tech students. And it, not that we're not, not that we're not excited to do it, but it is, it is an expensive, especially if they compete all the way up to the national level.
Well, that's, I may just be a good crossover opportunity between CTE and CCP when you do have students who are in that one. Because again, you want to get these children exposed to those type of opportunities. And if it's happening somewhere and we have some kids that have those skill sets, but they're just not in those programs, we want to give them those same opportunities to compete at those levels. So, thank you. That's all I have.
Appreciate it, appreciate it. Um, one for Dr. Lawrence, I would appreciate looking into the ability to centralize some of these, these programs if possible. I know you talked about putting some over at the Rosa Parks Building. I love that, that thought of being able to open some of that up and getting, giving opportunities to some of our other students at schools that do not have full CTC offerings, but putting in those kind of programs. And I want to echo the sentiments on entrepreneurship. I really do think that's huge in that I know we have a lot of, a lot of people in our community that are making six figures, sitting on the couch, eating potato chips, playing video games nowadays. Oh, it's a world of content creators. And I think preparing our students for the world that they're seeing in the world that's going to be out there. I mean, these children are seeing that and helping them navigate those waters would be helpful for us. And I think it just adds another thing that makes a student want to wake up and come to school knowing that they're doing something that they like. And I think that's what I appreciate about some of these programs. With everything else, I do think that we should figure out a way of how we're connecting and telling these stories. Like even the way you rattled off those programs, there are people at home with students in seventh and eighth grade that do not know that. And so being able to tell those stories when, when a parent's saying, you know, I want to, I'm in Dayton Public Schools, but what's, what's next for my child? And I think getting out there and showing those things, and I think for us, it puts an onus on, how do we not only highlight these programs, but make it a place where people are saying, this is a destination for my child? And so getting, getting to that is a huge thing for me. Just want to say I appreciate the conversation. Definitely was taking notes, seeing on how we can improve some of these pieces. How do we build upon, like what you said, what do students want to see? What does the, the market tell us? And I think connecting with some of our committees, like, you know, the Business Advisory Committee, some of our work that we're doing, how do we make sure that you're abreast of that? And that you can bring those needs to those groups as well? Because there are a lot of people out here doing that same piece, looking for people to fill these spaces in. And we have the, the students that I would much rather them get that experience, get those internships, and be ready. And have that ability to also, you know, help provide for themselves in these situations with conversations we're just having before. So any other piece before we move on with the meeting? Yes, sir, you always can.
Um, I do want to back up with Dr. Goodwin, because seeing that CCP and that CTE connection, because I know a couple of students who had left Metodale and went to Trotwood, and they are now taking classes at Sinclair, taking STNA classes after school, and just have an opportunity to where you can stay here and do the same thing, I think should really be implemented.
Yes. And we, our construction program is one that's bringing in CCP for next year. And I've been working with Sherri Gail this year to increase the amount of CCP that is being, not that it hasn't been offered, but the awareness for our CTE pathways and for our academics as well.
Thank you. Thank you, my fellow Metodale Lion. Appreciate you, sir, and thank you for the work you're doing in the district.
Thank you.
Do we have, moving along in our agenda, do we have anyone present from the bargaining units that wish to speak? I see none. Moving along, Madam Treasurer, do we have anybody from the public registered to speak?
Yes. Denise Lindsay. Denise?
I do not see any movement.
Anisha Jones. Anisha Jones. Those are the only two.
Okay. I appreciate that, Madam Treasurer. Moving into Superintendent's recommendations, before we go there, I would ask for everybody to refresh their screen if they haven't in the last few minutes or so. All right. With that, I will move on. Dr. Lawrence, your first recommendation?
Thank you, President Smith. My first recommendation is I recommend approval of the following Human Resources Agenda A for a vote.
I entertain a motion?
So moved.
It's been moved?
Second.
Second.
Second. Any questions on the motion?
Yes.
I, was this already for a vote, or was this just now changed for a vote?
It was updated to reflect for a vote.
So do we, do we need to waive the 48-hour rule to then vote on it?
Was it, was it already, I'm asking, was it on there for a vote, or did it change? I know there was a...
It was not on here for a vote at first.
Okay. Then we would have to, we can move that back and ask for a 48-hour waiver then.
You do not have to?
We already have the information.
Yeah, and it was already posted.
So we don't have to.
Then it was moved and seconded. Do we have any other questions? I think I saw Dr. Goodwin.
Yes, I actually want to pull a couple for...
Right ahead, Dr. Goodwin?
I want to pull number one and number 14.
Number one, number 14.
To be discussed in executive.
To be discussed in executive, we can do that. Any other questions?
Yes.
Mr. Eric Walker?
Um, I would, on number two, resigning for just that, not the other role, full-time role that he is in the district, right? That is correct. Okay.
Any other questions? I see none. May we have a vote excluding the numbers that Board Member Goodwin wanted to pull for conversation in executive?
One and 14.
One and 14.
He coughed the vote already.
Oh, did he? I was just waiting for discussion. Okay. President Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Wick?
Yes.
Dr. Goodwin?
Yes.
Dr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Lacy?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Ms. Reinhardt?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Eight yeses.
Thank you. Next recommendation?
Next recommendation is that the board vote on, for a vote to DEA after July 10th, Human Resources be.
Okay.
It's not for a vote.
It says on here for a vote.
Mine doesn't.
Oh, it doesn't say for a vote on the board agenda? It says it on the actual document.
Correct.
Make sure to make those changes to reflect, it says it on the, click it. But to make sure, make those changes. I will entertain a motion.
So moved.
Been moved?
Second.
Second. Any questions? Yes.
Do we have exit interviews on all these resignations?
I believe we do have, yes, not, they're not full exit interviews, but we have the reason why they're leaving the district.
So when you say not full, what does that mean?
So in the past, HR partners had a series of questions that they would ask employees. And now they are sent, you know, a question as to why, why they're leaving the district. So, and they typically fill out that Google form.
Can I ask a question of why is the HR partners who do that and not their, the supervisor that they're leaving, who they're more likely to respond to?
So, great question. Historically, that was done. We've had some discussions in the fall about, about their immediate supervisors being the ones to interview the employees that are leaving. But HR would help assist in developing those questions that should be asked.
Are y'all just still at the discussion phase of it, or y'all moving in that direction?
You know, we've had a lot going on, but it is definitely something that we will add to our yearly roadmap.
Okay. I don't, I can't remember. I think Aaron is actually on the customer service, which is the workforce sustainability piece of it, and just that, that feedback would be really helpful for us as we keep trying to improve as an organization of what, if there are things in, that we could do better. It just would be nice to know that information as we formulate some of the type of things that we got going on.
Agreed.
Thank you.
Agreed.
Say, Dr. Walker?
Hey, listen, y'all keep speaking at it to existence.
Mr. Eric Walker?
Thank you. So I, I just want to be clear. As board members, we vote no because they may have potentially went and found better opportunities, and it's a mark from us on their license for them leaving us for that opportunity?
It's in a, it's not a mark on them. It's, it's us saying that we don't let them out of their contracts because they're with us right now. And then it sends it to the state to go, they broke their contract with us without completing the term. Is it likely that they will actually get a mark? I don't think it's ever happened that they've gotten one. But it's us saying no, that we don't release them for their contracts.
Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else want any input on it?
I, I mean, it puts an imposition upon the district when you, when somebody leaves mid-year.
Correct. Which is why they have a contract and they're not like other jobs where it's more at will.
But they may be leaving for a better opportunity.
I get that, but they signed up, their contracts weren't from July 1st to June 30th. So if they leave before June 30th, then they, they breached their contract, because it's an employment contract.
Okay.
Anything else? Do we have a vote?
President Smith?
No.
Ms. Wick?
No.
Dr. Goodwin?
No.
Dr. Bailey?
No.
Mr. Lacy?
No.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Ms. Reinhardt?
No.
Mr. Nichols?
No.
Seven no, one yes.
Next recommendation?
I'd like to ask the board to look at contracts for review, and we'll take any questions, contracts and agreements.
Okay. I'll open that up as we look. I think Mr. Lacy has a question.
The first city of Dayton, you kind of, I think you kind of need a date, but that, is that just for the current year?
That is on the current year. I'm going to put a date on it.
Okay.
Yes, sir. Is there a deadline for when schools are supposed to play a location for their proms?
Good question, Dr. Lawrence.
I wouldn't consider it an official deadline, but that should be done, that should actually have already been done.
Back on.
What has happened? Somebody checked the live feed.
All right. Did I answer your question, Mr. Nichols? Okay. Dr. Goodwin?
Yes. So the, I do see Metodale on here for their prom, and I did get feedback from you guys about the other proms. And I see that only one high school still hasn't scheduled both their prom and senior shindig, whether it's breakfast or not. Since they don't have a location, is there a possibility for us to utilize one of the locations that's in our many CRA agreements to help that last school, which I believe is Thurgood, actually have somewhere to go at this juncture?
So I haven't talked to the principal or Ms. Dooley about that. I don't know if they already have something in place and we just haven't processed it, but I think it's a really good idea to use that space. Because to my knowledge, in my 18 months here, we've not used it.
Chief Dooley?
Um, they have not.
You gotta come to the mic. It's a live recording.
What are you gonna do, chief?
Somebody watches this later to take minutes, so.
I think we need to just get a mic to walk around with.
Do need a mic. You just pass it around. Actually, that one does walk around. It's not.
Who's gonna do it?
Actually, this afternoon, Principal Lewis and her junior and senior advisors were meeting after their faculty meeting. They have several venues. They're just trying to match up venues with dates. So they should have something in a couple of days.
Are those venues better than the ones that we get in the CRAs that we haven't used? Because we want y'all to use them.
I can't speak to that.
Okay. So if that's an option for you guys, and those venues are available, please take advantage of that one.
Okay. I'll work with Dr. Lawrence on that.
Thank you. Second question, on the Cincinnati bill, can someone explain what this is since we did have a special meeting to go with another contract, and I see now an extension here?
So the current PR, the current purchase order was actually out of funds, and so this is to pay for the rest of January, February, and the portion of March that we may need. It says to June, June 30th, I believe. However, it really is just to get us through to March.
Is the total amount, the... Is the total amount the nine hundred and sixty thousand, or is it the seven hundred and fifty-five thousand, like this whole?
The seven hundred and fifty-five gets us through to March, and the nine hundred and sixty was, um, since the, since the beginning that I know of the, of the purchase order.
Okay. Is it possible just to get the breakdown of the two million that's listed in here, what that amount is? If that's from the end of, or the start of last year to March, or just even what that is covering?
Definitely.
Please. I'll pass the mic to someone else.
Any other questions? Mr. Eric Walker?
I appreciate. I'm just, okay, so with regards to the Five Rivers Metro Parks, um, can we not use a building or Welcome Stadium or something else besides Riverside?
The venue, we can, yeah, we can change. It doesn't have to be that venue. I think the most important thing, I think you might probably get is that we have the festival, but that's where it's been historically, uh, in this adminis, and it's been actually really successful at that, at that venue. It's been really nice. So we just, uh, we didn't change everything from before. We kept some things.
Yeah, but for me, it's just the parking downtown.
Right.
I would just like to address that, um, the venue was already booked for the previous year, so every year you have to book it. So last year, we put a deposit, but we did talk about changing the venue for, um, next year.
Okay. Thank you.
Is, is that not a part of one of our CRAs agreements?
If I can, Sharice just told me that Welcome Stadium isn't available.
Is that the track meet?
Um, and if, I'll just say, if parking's an issue, we can maybe publicize that we have Riverside, one of our elementary schools right across the river, across the bridge. I think we could probably fit a lot of people in that parking lot, and they can easily walk over the bridge, but that's a great concern. I'm glad you brought it up.
Yes. Not being getting your May party is really hard for Welcome. Any other questions?
Yes. It's actually about Welcome again.
Go ahead.
So one of the conversations that this board had for the renovation of Welcome was to move graduation to Welcome Stadium. And are we still going with UD when we have the stadium that's right there next to it, and why are we still, why aren't we utilizing that venue for that, that piece, or even considering it?
So, we, uh, like to give high school principals an opportunity to make that decision. Uh, we talked to them about it, and it had another subcommittee meeting, and we decided on the University of Dayton for this year.
Yeah, but it's a twenty-one thousand dollar cost to us from the general fund, when again, we have a whole stadium that's available. And the cri, I think the highest graduating, I mean, they're small classes. I just don't get why we're not using a thirty million dollar stadium that we put money into. I get UD as a backup if it rained, but we spent thirty million in this place, guys.
Ms. Dooley's coming up.
Uh, when we had graduation at Welcome Stadium a couple of years ago, there was some staging that had to be put on the, the green space chairs on the track, and we did a little bit of damage. Um, with the state track meet around the corner, uh, we do not want to jeopardize anything for that meet, so that was one reason. The other reason for UD Arena is the unlimited seating capacity. We're not going to require tickets this year, so, um, we don't have to combat the weather, and quite honestly, it's a first-class venue, and our suburban, uh, our kids' suburban peers have a first-class venue, and our kids deserve the same.
Are you saying Welcome Stadium is in a first-class venue?
I'm not saying that at all. I'm just saying that we don't want to jeopardize the track or the green space prior to the state track meet.
Can I ask, what's the date to the state track meet?
I don't know.
Eighty.
Thirty-first and the June first.
Memorial Day weekend, last weekend.
So it's after this. I don't, I'm not, I'm not a fan of being, being held to what happened in the past. In the past, it wasn't a thirty million dollar stadium. So I think our operations team is phenomenal, and I would always rather put money into our own place if you need a TARP and those type of things, or even even consider those type of things. Again, it is the biggest investment we made in the district. It's a phenomenal thing, and if it, if it's a good day, it should be considered moving forward, especially when the graduating classes are less than a hundred thirty per class. So, that's all I have.
Anybody else? Seeing none. The next recommendation?
Next recommendation is review memorandum of understanding for Bottom Line.
Mm-hmm. Any questions?
Dr. Lawrence, can you just explain a little bit what this is?
Absolutely. Thank you, Sherri Gill, for the work that you put in. Essentially, uh, we are, um, getting tutors, I mean, memorandum of, and it's mentors for the junior class, currently junior class now, and they will have, uh, one-to-one mentors for next year. We'll have a space carved out in each school to review grades and also work through college, things like FAFSA, college scholarship applications. So we heard earlier about the importance of mentorship, and so we're starting that process right now, and it's free of charge, and thank you, Dr. Gill.
Any other questions? Yes, sir.
Um, is there anything that you're currently doing with helping other students now, seniors with the FAFSA situation? Because I know right now, so they're not giving me help.
Yeah, the counselors have FAFSA workshops, they have FAFSA nights, um, they're in cafeterias, they're going in classrooms to give feedback um, about how you do it and when you do it. One of the most difficult things is getting the financial information from parents, so I guess I would say, Tommy, thanks for the opportunity for me to say that, uh, we need, we need that feedback from you in order to move through that process. We're also in the process of having, um, counselors here. Uh, we're gonna be sending out, um, supplementals for counselors to work all summer. Counselors typically here work one week after the school year and then one week before, but because the FAFSA, um, information is coming back so slowly, uh, we're gonna put ourselves in a position to support kids like you all summer, this summer.
I would ask too, um, if Ms. Gill could connect with my Meadowdale Lion student down there before he gets out to kind of direct him with some of his questions as well, so he can also share back with Student Senate and other, other students that information. Appreciate that question, sir. Any other questions? Ms. Reiner first, then I'll go over to Dr. Bailey.
If I can, at this point, I would like to bring some attention to some of our community partners that are really helping with this as well, too. I sit on the Dayton Montgomery County College Scholarship, uh, Board, and one of the things that we talk about in making sure that we're awarding these scholarships to kids in Dayton and surrounding areas is the real needs that they have for FAFSA completion. Um, as a parent who's taken two of my four kids through this process, it is hard, even when I have the time and the resources to devote to it. Uh, we dread it every single calendar year when it comes around, and for parents who don't, um, have the paperwork handy all the time, who don't have the resources, who've never done this before, it's a lot more difficult. We recognize those barriers, and we want to do what we can to reduce those barriers. The conversations that we have with the, the Scholarship Board that I'm on, as well as the College Promise Scholars that we have, who have mentors all the way through the school program, through Dayton Public, um, are really focusing on helping our students right now, our seniors, through that process, and I would like to give a big thanks to those outside organizations and the works and the supports that they do in addition to our counselors in the schools every single day. Thank you.
Dr. Bailey?
Yeah, I just want to be, make, make sure I'm clear on this, uh, where it says, uh, organization commitments, where it says targeted number of students, one hundred, and then it's up under that, it says targeted number of applicant, applications, two hundred and ten. That means that we already have? Does that mean that we already have two hundred and ten?
Well, Sherri Gill's gonna, so part of it is, to get a hundred, they're saying they want to target two hundred and ten applicants to make sure they get a hundred students. But Ms. Gill can give you more information on where we are currently with the program and the students identified and where they are as well.
Uh, we're just getting started on, on identifying and the recruitment. We are waiting for you to sign this MOU. And we're, we're ready to go. We are, um, I'm meeting with principals and counselors. I've been, spent a lot of time with the staff, but bottom line, it is a free-to-us, um, program for college access and success. They will not only mentor these students for next year, their whole, well, this summer, and their senior year, up to six years after that, as they continue to go, go to college. So it's an amazing opportunity. They're gonna, and, um, those target numbers, I, uh, bottom line is committed to working not just in the state of Ohio, not just in the Dayton region, but absolutely first and foremost with Dayton Public. And I think they will hire as many people as they need for as many students as we have, okay? We set those numbers as a, you know, they're, they've done this in other places in the country, and they find that you need about two hundred applications to get a hundred students who are gonna go through, through with it, and so we set those numbers. I hope we'll have more than that. I hope they have to hire extra staff. Um, so those, those numbers are there to put something on paper, but we will be trying to connect as many students as possible. They target, one of the beauties of it is that they, um, are not just looking at the higher-end students, which lots of these programs do. They're looking at students with a two-point-three grade point and above, and they really want to work with the two-point-three to about two-point-eight, two-point-nine. That's their focus. It is first generation. There are some income restraints, so, you know, not all, not all two hundred folks who want to do it are gonna be able to do it for reasons because of who this, this program targets. So, um, but we are working to get the, their staff connected with our counselors and with our principals. Also, I just talked to their lead from Ohio today, James Cosby, Crosby, and he is, he was also working with Omega to use their navigators. So, you know, it's gonna be all-in on recruitment.
Thank you.
And I would want to echo that, um, we met with Mr. Cosby. He was on a, on an educational summit panel, I think. Uh, Ms. Goins was there, uh, Dr. Jones was there, and when he talked about Bottom Line, the first thing he said is, we're in Dayton Public Schools. And there was other districts there, Mad River, I think, um, represented from Huber, Learn to Earn, all around here, and that was his first comments, was that we're here and we're gonna be with Dayton Public. So I want to give a shout out to everybody who, who made that happen on the, the front end to say, this is a program that wants to work with students here, and how can we get them in Dayton Public Schools? Mr. Eric Walker?
Um, I, so for me, what, okay, I see the GPA of a two-point-three. How, how was that brought into the factor, and the students that are below that, what resources are available that can help them get to that level to take advantage of something like this? And secondly, I would ask, with regards to the high school buildings that we have with juniors, what is the even split per building for students to take part in this program?
I would just add that below two-point-three, that's a comprehensive curriculum instruction and supervision process. Um, that is not, uh, germane to any one building. There's no general piece that's specific to each building, and I know that, um, principals are looking at, and administrative teams, and district, the district leadership team, uh, is looking at students in that space and how we're providing support. Actually, we're gonna invite you to the next DLT. And then, um, you know, your other question around this, uh, idea around breakdown, I've, I've heard Ms., Dr. Gill talk about equity and how we move through that process, so we will, uh, make sure you get the breakdown. We're conscious of where those hundred slots are gonna be.
Thank you.
Anything else? No? Next recommendation, please.
For the next recommendation, it's, it's really comprehensive, um, and it's, it's really comprehensive and aligned to things we're doing in curriculum instruction and also across the board in operations and in academics. So I'm gonna ask Associate Superintendent Lisa Minor to come up and talk about the memorandum of understanding for Montgomery County, um, workforce development. And as you mentioned before, Marv being favored. Because we can't get in.
Thank, thank you, Dr. Lawrence, board members, Treasurer Abraha. It's my pleasure to present to you the memorandum of understanding that we have with the Montgomery County Workforce Development, Workforce and Development Department. Um, our goal is to make sure we're providing opportunities to all of our students. Uh, we've heard the wonderful programming, our CCP programming, our scholarship programming, and even our career tech programming. But how do we reach all of our students, and what partnerships will we have and develop in order to make sure each child is successful? So what they have agreed to do, we've met with them on several occasions. Uh, we have a graduation success plan that will be with every student in Dayton Public Schools. And we're used to the youth works program. We've been involved with it for many, many years. The way it will look different this year is we'll have youth works and beyond. So we talked about, uh, we know youth works is ages fourteen to eighteen, but let's imagine, uh, the child that is a graduating senior this year. Maybe they're not in the career tech program. Maybe they haven't even done any CCP classes. When they graduate, what opportunity will they have? This memorandum's gonna include not only youth works, but youth works and college career coaching and workforce development beyond. So there's a program they have for eighteen to twenty-four-year-olds that they're willing to sign our kids up for right now. Um, and it's just gonna go very deep. It's gonna affect, uh, all of our high schools, and they have a whole team willing to work. So we're gonna continue youth works, but instead of it just being a job to get paid money, which we want them to, it's gonna be directly aligned to their career path, their graduation success path, based on, you heard about the youth science assessment that all of our students would go through. So whatever their interests are and their aptitude, col, uh, the Montgomery County Workforce Development wants to work right along with that to make sure they're on track for success. Our goal, one of the goals collectively that we have with Montgomery County Workforce Development is one year after graduation, they're enrolled in a college successful, enrolled in military, or at a livable wage, with a sustainable wage for their family. They're doing one of those things. And so this is, this program that we're, they're gonna do with us is what will make that happen in addition to working with all of our other partners.
Any questions? Dr. Goodwin?
Yeah, you said that the program, the eighteen to twenty-four is called the Montgomery County Workforce Development Program?
It, uh, one of the managers is over that program for the county, who also, it's included into this memorandum. So the youth works program is fourteen to eighteen. There's another program that's eighteen to twenty-four. Um, they, uh, actually su- support college students, um, as they're getting their certifications, whether it's nursing or any other in-demand field, they provide support beyond, similar to Bottom Line. They're also offering that.
Okay. Can you send me that program? I can't find it on the website by that name. Questions?
Larry Nash is over that program.
I'm gonna just count on you to send it to me at this point.
Okay.
I gave it a good Google search. A couple of other things came up, but it wasn't on target with that one. In the memorandum, like one of the, so we've only had the youth work program back in the district post-COVID for two years, I think, at this point. And the biggest barrier that we have seen in that time period is getting kids into the program itself. So last year, we ran into, if they didn't sign up by March, by the time the orientation came for June, even though they showed up at opponents where we gave them space to do it, those children were turned away because the march, like the, all the individuals.
The deadline?
They, they had hit their, even though we were also, as a district, providing the positions for them. In this agreement, I see that we're giving them data, and we're giving them space to do those type of things, but it's not necessarily meeting the pain point that we have right now with our kids, when, when we create jobs for our children to be able to take part in, that we're getting them through that process, so when June comes, they're able to participate. Correct, because it, it was disheartening to see children who physically showed up to opponents, they went through the orientation, and then they were turned away from the program because they didn't, on youth works end, they didn't fill out early enough. And even though they did the stuff on site, so I don't see that addressed in here, and that's a, that was last year's pain point, point for us. And I, I would like to see something like that come because we have, I think, the operations team last year did a great job of finding positions throughout the district that our kids could work here, and especially our kids who are with us through. kids could work here and especially our kids who are with us through the summer. So I know you guys are doing the middle school, I don't remember what it was called, but it's like reading and math and all that great stuff. But just that opportunity and for them to be able to have four hours with us, working and still stay four hours with us, learning.
Yeah.
And I, I would hate for us to miss out again because on the youth work side, they just get over, it's just so much that hits them when June comes. And it was, it's too much and I don't want to, I want our kids to stay with, I don't want to see them ending up.
Right.
Getting real full-time jobs because people will take them at 16 now to get a solid 40 in.
Well, I thank you for bringing that to my attention. I have a follow-up meeting tomorrow with the county and we'll mention that and so we can work something in here to guarantee that our kids get registered and are eligible and are not turned away.
And if you could even request too, because the request that we made last year was that our staff be able to go through the orientation training so we could assist on that part of making sure that we had individuals available to do the training for the kids that are going through this program and assist with the paperwork that they need on their side to get in that piece. Because yes, if we can remove that barrier, I just believe that we can see more, more children in this district, stay here, working in this area.
Yeah.
And a part of some of the other things that we have going on. And it would just strengthen the, the partnership as a whole.
Right. Thank you. Thank you for that.
Anything else? I just would like to add in, even though you did not mention it, the College and Career Readiness Symposium that is going to be this Friday.
Oh, yes.
You put that out for the community, especially when talking about this memorandum and the CTC conversation that we were having earlier.
Right. So we have several components of college career readiness in the district. You've heard about some tonight. All of the key players are work-based learning coordinators, career tech team, college credit plus and scholarships. Everyone's coming together, our career connections teachers, we're all coming together at a symposium to align everything we do to support all students. Whenever, if we, no longer are we going to work in isolated pockets. We're also going to have a lot of our community partners who may not be directly employed by the district, but support all of our students, such as Young Urban Life, as well as the Right, the Take Flight Academy Program with Wright State University. We'll have all kinds of speakers talking about their role in supporting all of our students and being college and career ready. So it'll be during our Professional Development Day, which is Friday, the 16th, at Sinclair Community College, Building 12.
What time?
8:30 to 12:30.
Thank you. Any other questions? Mr. Eric Walker.
I mean, since you was putting people on the spot, I was going to put Ms. Powell on the spot with her event this Friday at Stivers as, as well. Just wanted to talk about that one.
Good evening. Thank you so much for bringing that up. So in an effort, we've got, had a lot of conversations about nutrition services. We did a presentation for Cabinet earlier this week. And part of their PD this coming up Friday, they're, they're doing a episode of CHOP from the TV show. So you all are invited out to come be a judge, come participate. But in addition to that, they will have samples available of some of the new items that they want us to include on the menu. So come hungry and taste everything that we're excited. They'll be here at the meeting next week to do a presentation. Hopefully by then you can give your feedback on what you thought Cabinet Leadership, the, they, they fed us really, really well. So we're excited to that. It's a Friday, 1 o'clock, Stivers in the cafeteria. If you're available, please come out. Absolutely. Absolutely. I had two teenage sons at one time. I know you, you can eat, so absolutely, come on out.
And I, I will just share with the district PD Friday, I did some feedback that I did hear was that the staff would appreciate some meal items at their PD's since they're all day besides a Super Donut. So if we can look into that as well, that would be great. And I look forward to Friday. I was excited when I saw that the potential new meal items for students because there have been something that students have said. So thank you for that and I appreciate it.
You're welcome. We'll see you Friday.
Whoa, 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 where you going? I was trying to wait. You know, I'm trying to find myself right now, so I decided to be vegan. You guys got some vegan options? Because last, I want to say Dr. Lawrence last year was putting out here how the cafeteria was really opening up to gluten-free, where they was bringing vegan, they was offering coffee bars. Just trying to see if we keeping that same energy.
I will see what, what we have that meets those standards. Thank you.
I think they have a Santa Fe Ranch, I mean salad.
This guy.
I'm serious, it was good. I tried it over at, uh, right, them, right, Wright Brothers.
Ranch has dairy, honey.
Well, you don't have to have a salad.
There you go.
I mean, the dressing.
Any, anything else? Seeing nothing.
Oh, I have one more.
Oh, did you have something else?
Yes, just a request that, that all the MOUs are at least vetted by legal.
Okay.
Please.
Next recommendation?
Uh, no problem. Uh, next recommendation for review, I want you to take a look at the Dayton Foundation Transfer Fund. We're just using some of our money from the Dayton Foundation to support STEM at Thurgood Marshall with a VXP ecosystem. And so we're, we're just providing some additional curriculum options. And instead of using general fund, we're going to start to use that Dayton Foundation money that's been sitting for quite some time.
Any questions?
How many, how many students are enrolled in this STEM program now at Thurgood?
I don't know that. I'd have to ask Melinda and/or Ms. Dooley or probably the principal, she probably been vetting all of us.
Okay.
But I can, I'm writing it down and get it to you.
Thank you.
All right.
Seeing nothing else? Your next recommendation?
My next recommendation is the Board for Review, take a look at the negotiated OC Local, I can't see that, 101 SROs contract. This is the, I believe, 10th of the agreements. We have two more to go. We're almost home.
Any questions? As always, feel free to reach out during the week as well. Next recommendation?
And my next recommendation is that the Board take a look at the settlement fines agreement that, that is here, based on what we're going to get returned back to us from the High Department of Education and also what we don't have to pay based on fines and transportation.
Questions, comments? Dr. Goodwin?
Will these?
And I'll move over.
Will the funds go into transfer, like where does the funds go back into, like, are they restricted funds in transportation or are they going to general or something else?
Well, I thought I'd get that from you being a super supporter of transportation. Next to you is the Treasurer, she's smiling, she's going to answer that.
It will go to, it will purchase to whatever they decide to purchase. The fund is in the Dayton Foundation. So it will, after he approve it.
Well, we're talking about two different things. We're talking about the settlement.
The settlement.
Oh, I have no idea.
She has no idea.
So Dr. Goodwin, I know where you're going. I, I'll make sure that is in the transportation budget line. How about that?
I'm coming up, he popped up.
Good evening, sir.
Which one, which fund?
Good evening, everyone. So the funds will go in the general fund. They were withheld from State Foundation, so they are State Foundation money for us.
Will it go into Transportation's next year budget?
No.
Why not?
Basically, it's, we paid for the money last year.
Yeah.
So, uh, we paid for private, parochial school transportation last year, and then OD said, oh, we were non-compliant. So they took the money back. The money's already been spent and then they took the money back. So we're just getting the money they took from us from last year.
Well, where'd you pay for the money out of?
General fund.
General fund.
Feel like it should go to Transportation?
No, it's canceled.
Craig, what say you?
There's more conversation.
Okay.
No, no, we don't need you. We just want to know if, we just want to know if you want the 750 or not.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank, thank you, sir. Any other questions, comments? Not, does this conclude your recommendations?
That concludes my recommendations, President Smith.
Appreciate you, sir. Moving on to Madam Treasurer. Your recommendations, ma'am?
Okay. All my recommendations are for review only. And recommendation A and B, they go together. What we are doing on this appropriation, we're increasing our appropriation in general fund by 2.2 million to OEC, for OEC, Office of Exceptional Children, 1.5 million to pay our debt. And on the other funds, we're increasing Fund 300, we got more money on that one, more receipts. When we get receipts, we increase the budget. Fund 439, we increase in it by 63,750, the same, we get more money. We're increasing Permanent Improvement Fund 3 by 1.5 million. You know, we increased the general fund to move it to pay the debt.
Any questions for Treasurer? Mr. Lacy?
Okay, that, you've increased the Treasurer's.
Yes.
By the same amount that you've increased the Permanent Improvement, the 1, 1,542,619.
Yes, I didn't.
It's not a transfer?
It's not a transfer. It is going to be transferred to Permanent Improvement. But I increased, to transfer that money, I put it into my special cost center. Treasurer is the one who pays it.
Okay.
So from the Treasurers, it goes to Treasurer's General Fund, it goes, it transfers to Permanent Improvement, which is.
And then Permanent Improvement has to be.
Fund OO3.
The appropriation has to increase by the same amount.
Yes, the same amount.
Okay. I understand now. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions for the Treasurer? Seeing none? Your next recommendation?
Yeah, the next one is Permanent Certificate of Estimated Resources. What we transfer to increase our budget, we get that estimated certificate, we increase it by that. So they go line by line.
Seeing no questions, Madam Treasurer? Your next recommendation?
Okay. Now the transfer. We are transferring from general fund to Fund OO3, which is Permanent Improvement, 1.5 million. That is the permanent transfer. Do you have any question?
Questions? Next recommendation?
Okay. The next one is just a placeholder. The Finance Committee is going to meet next Thursday.
Thank you. Next recommendation?
The next one is minutes, minutes for January 9, minutes for 16, 22, January 22, and January 31.
So I did have a question on the minutes piece because we did a Board 101 workshop and they had reference as far as the, the waiving of the reading of the minutes. Do you know when the Board resolution was put out there to waive the reading of the minutes?
I can find out. I don't remember.
It was just like, it was just something that came up that the legal for the OSBA conference had said that that's something that the Board should do. Like not read the minutes, but just waive the reading of the minutes so that that piece is out there.
Okay. I'll find out and I'll let you know.
Okay. Thanks.
Do they suggest you do it like at the organizational meeting or something like that?
No, it's really if you do it once, then you don't have to do it anymore. But it's like, if you, if no one can remember when it occurred, it's just better to do it again to make sure that it's out the way and then like it's officially on record again. Am I right, Mr. Bailey?
I think so.
Yeah, I think, I think you are right.
I'll find out. I'll send it to all of you.
All right. Thank you. Anything else?
Okay.
Next recommendation, please?
The next one is donations. We love donations. We got a donation from Mr. Alhamdani, previous Board Member. It is for Belmont Middle School uniforms, $1,100 worth. Godwin Gilboy for McKinney Vento, cash, $100. James Deaton, that is for golf programming, golf bills and several items, worth $1,200. Phi Beta Sigma for DPS students in need uniforms, cash, $500. Professional bill riders, DPS staff, staff and students, 40 tickets, worth $1,000. Ronnie Kersley, International School, for International School at Residence Park, 40 tickets, closing items and several, worth $100. Sylvia for McKinney Vento, cash, $100. Thank you, donors, until we send the letter of thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead, Mr. Eric Walker.
You know, I just want to highlight the greatest fraternity of Phi Beta Sigma. We, we actually do have another donation that we gave to Fairview Elementary as well that will be coming as well. So I'm just saying alphas, something.
Thank you.
Had to let him have his moment. Next recommendation? Oh, go ahead. Dr. Goodwin.
On the donation, the website piece, I think it lists an employee that's no longer here to contact. So if you guys could.
Is that Sharon?
Yeah. It still has her.
Yeah, we'll change it.
Y'all can have that one. And is the paper form the only way that people can get in touch with you guys for donations? Because I have some individuals and I was like, I, I don't know, maybe you should call them. Like there, is there not a digital way to donate to the district other than Welcome Stadium yet?
No.
Is that, is that something we, I know we're going through a whole website redesign and all that stuff, but being able to integrate that and especially with our Google form of duplicating kind of what we do with Welcome Stadium donations for people to be able to donate digitally. Other than Welcome Stadium? Like just general stuff? Sweet. Can you send me the link so I can send it to some people who asked about it? Because I couldn't find it on there. But thank you. And another shout out to the Phi Beta Sigma because the alphas are not keeping up. I mean, golly, January's over. I put something on the books. It's two of y'all up here. It's ridiculous.
Think we have to.
Starting to think y'all might not be financial.
Might have to get to a point of order. Greek on Greek drama right now. But I definitely want to appreciate everybody that donates to the district and thank you. Your next recommendation, Madam Treasurer?
Next one is purchase requisitions. They are from different departments. Let's look at them and we'll answer.
As we look at them, feel free to ask any questions that you may have. And also remember that also send in questions you may have. I definitely want to lift up the Board members that took some time to send over some questions in advance. Think it helps our staff with preparing some of those things. So I want to lift up those and say thank you for doing that as well. Do we have any questions? Purchase requisitions?
Yes. With the stepping stone one, so I know in the past that we have struggled to maintain school psychiatrists. How does this help us with being able to maintain the caseload of what school psychiatrists are actually going through? of what school psychiatrists are actually going through?
Well, I'm going to ask our new interim Director of Officer of Exceptional Children, Ms. Dinsbrud, to come up and talk about retention of school psychs and how stepping stones plays into that.
Can someone repeat the question for me?
Just how the stepping stone contract or purchase order will help us with maintaining the course load for the school psychiatrists?
So we have more than just school psychs on stepping stones, we have SLPs, we have OTs, we have OTAs, and we have a psych and an itinerant for preschool, so we're using them for all those services. Because we can't, we can't staff in the district for, for the needs.
Okay, so how does it help on the psych ones?
On the psychs, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, on the psychiatrists. Because I know we've been low on the amount that we have on us. Are we now going to be closer to being in compliance? Are we getting closer to meeting compliance numbers?
We're getting closer, yes, we are. We, we only have one with them right now, though. So they're just a little, school psychs are a little scarce right now for us.
Okay, what's the projected amount that we're hoping to gain just in that area?
From stepping stones or general for the district?
Just, just from stepping stone from us to the district, to help us.
We're not actively search, getting any more right now, right? We have one through stepping stones and 19 in the district.
Okay, so the other physicians, because this looks like 900,000, how many of the other physicians are we, are, or how many personnel are we actually getting, what type of service from them?
Through, through stepping stones?
Yes.
Yeah, we have, we have seven OTs.
What's OT stand for, please?
Occupational therapist.
Thank you.
We have two physical therapists, we have 17 speech therapists, that's the big one right there. And we have a vision specialist that we contract with and one school psych and like I said, one preschool itinerant.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else?
Not on that one.
Okay.
Not on that one. Isn't it fun coming up?
I don't mind at all.
Appreciate you, ma'am.
Second question, on the ESS Northeast LLC. So we talked about this in the past, I don't think this is your area.
I don't think it's me, is it?
No, but you can stay if you want to.
I was going to answer.
I think it's Dr. Jones. Yeah, we talked about, couple months ago, about us looking at bringing this back in-house due to the low percentage of coverage that we've been getting in the past from, I don't know if it's this company, but it may be the same company. Where are we at with that analysis and how long are we looking to continue to work with a company that really can't meet our need?
So the last fill rate we had was like right around 73%. Uh, this is the last year of a three-year contract. We had like two one-year options, this is the last one. And so there are several companies out there that do the same thing. Uh, we have not initiated discussions about what that looks like if we do it ourselves.
Okay, you guys have a timeline of you actually starting that, because does this contract end in June or does this end next June?
Uh, this fiscal year, fiscal year '24.
Okay. So seeing how we are in February now, can I just request that you guys start that conversation and bring us back some, something on the pros and cons to both if we did in-house versus out-house, knowing that you said they're only giving us a 73% fill rate?
Correct, most definitely. I'll, um, ask if we can bring it to Cabinet?
Yeah, we can bring it to Cabinet. And also actually, let's wait until we go through the TO, TO process, budget process, and then provide the pros and cons. Let's just say by, no later than mid-March.
Mid-March?
Even though we won't be done, it'll be overlapping, but no later than mid-March.
Not add it to the annual roadmap as well?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Thank you, that's all I have.
Mr. Walker?
I just, uh, two things. The first one is some clarity. So, the district gets dollars and then we purchase the items for CJ or how does that work?
We purchase the items for CJ, yes.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
And then my other question would be on the district purchasing more laptops for the district. How many more laptops are we going to purchase and how many are still out there that can be refurbished and reused?
So there, so there are hundreds that can be refurbished and reused currently, right now, um, we have, in the initial budget discussion, the initial budget and Ms. Clark's budget, we are proposing, we'll be proposing to the Board a one-to-one. So that means we'll go through inventory of the ones we have, subtract that number from the total number of students and then have a request for one-to-one Chromebooks for each and every student in the district so they can take it home. Now that's of course pending Board discussion and Board approval, but that's where we are in our budget plans right now.
Right, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Um, I know currently at, at my school, in my pathway, we're trying to like fix the current Chromebooks that we have now, but we don't have like all the resources. I was wondering if there was a way to save money, you could like help us, like get, you know, replacement for keys, for the screens, you know, stuff like that.
Uh, brother Tommy, we will make sure that Sentinel or a representative of Sentinel or our internal folks come out to have that discussion with you. But yes, it would be wonderful to have you all assist us in that process, we got to get you supplies. And we also do the same thing at Belmont in the overage transition program, they also fix them here as well. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else? Next recommendation, Madam Treasurer?
We have Zenin now for Miami's Burke City Schools and, um, Netmics LLC.
Any questions? Seeing none? This concludes your recommendations, Madam Treasurer?
Yes.
Okay. Moving on, I do see that we have a first reading in policy. Dr. Goodwin?
Inso much as the Board of Education. Inso much as the Board of Education is committed to continuing updating of its policies, rules and regulations, mail, and the committee which was appointed has been working towards that goal. The following are brought at this time for first reading. In compliance with Board file, BFC policy adoption. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Education of the Dayton City School District, Montgomery County, Ohio hereby accepts and adopts the following policies that have been codified for inclusion in the handbook of the policies, rules and regulations. EJ, video surveillance, surveillance and electronic monitoring. GCAC, transfers and assignments. IKA, grading systems. These policies are being brought, being read for the first time. As such, a motion or second is not required. The policies will be available in the Superintendent's Office for review and comment prior to their second reading and adoption by the Board of Education. Furthermore, the policies will be reviewed by the Superintendent's Office, the Board's Office and the Legal Department of the Dayton Public Schools prior to the second reading. And I will just give you guys a little context around some of the things that we did do. Policy is a very diverse group now. We got, we got millennials in there and Gen Xers and it's a fun time. We actually had a bunch of policies, but the video and surveillance policy is coming from some individual, from the discussion around the halo and those objects out here. So, and this is the starting point of that policy here, or the policy. The team is still tasked with building a more, a deeper resolution, which is the next homework assignment here. The transfer and assignments came before its last time, but it had to go back to legal for some adjustments and the group itself made some additional adjustments to that as well. So excited that got done. And our grading system actually has been something that the team outside of the policy group have worked on for several months before bringing it to policy. And I believe next month you'll see the regulation come forward for that one that kind of goes into something deeper in it. So I do encourage you to all read these things and policy is always open to anyone to come visit, it's on, visit us, it is on the second Tuesday of the month at 4 o'clock across the street. So if any of you have any questions or you want to know something, jump in now. Go ahead.
We had some community members that came out and spoke extensively about their concerns about some of the technology that we were looking at potentially adopting. Were they a part of this process at all? How much, because they, I remember they expressed a pretty strong desire to be a part of that process.
So they were, they were invited to this, legal developed this part of it, they're still, the regulation is really the in-depth part of it because we needed the policy before we could get into how you utilize it. So they are still going to be a part of that part right there of the implementation. But yes, they have been communicated with about what's going on in it.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else? Appreciate you, appreciate you, Dr. Goodwin, appreciate everybody on the Policy Committee. Before we move on, I do just want, as we're here, want to put out, please look into our Black History programs throughout the district. We are in Black History Month. Our students and staff members have put a lot of time and effort into some of these programs, so please take some time to look at that. And I will ask that as we look at Black History Month, my challenge would be for us to look at those people who came before the people that are the ones we know. We know about the Jackie Robinsons, but there are people who, people weren't ready for them to be a Jackie Robinson yet. And so looking into those people who weren't accepted, who weren't able to break through those ceilings and get through those doors, but really were some of the trailblazers folk. Because a lot of times we forget those pieces and we forget that people have been ready and have been great and sometimes society didn't allow them to be great. So as we look into Black History Month, please take that into consideration as well. Definitely, I appreciate Ms. Kidd sending that out. Everybody on the Board, please take note of that and community as well. Now, I think I can do it with my eyes closed, Mr. Lacy.
Bet you can't.
Pursuant to Section 121 dot 22G2 of the Ohio Vice Code, I move that this Board go into executive session. This meeting is being held to consider the appointment and employment of a public employee. We'll have a second.
Second.
Moving second, do we have any questions? May we have a vote?
President Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Wick?
Yes.
Dr. Goodwin?
Yes.
Dr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Lacy?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Ms. Reiner?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols. Eight S's.
Charity Adams Early made many contributions to education, the military and her community. Early was born on December 5, 1918 in North Carolina. Charity was valedictorian at Booker T. Washington High School and received a scholarship to attend Wilberforce University. Early graduated in 1938 and began teaching math and science at a junior high school in South Carolina. During World War II, Charity joined the Women's Army Corps, or WAC. She traveled to Iowa to begin training. In 1943, she was promoted to major, being the highest ranking female officer at the Training Center. In 1944, Early was made commanding officer of the first ever unit of the WAC to travel overseas. She ran the 6,888th Central Postal Directory Battalion. The main objective of the 6 AAA was to sort and send millions of pieces of backlog mail to US servicemen in Europe. The mission was essential. The lack of mail meant low morale for the troops. Charity's unit handled 65,000 pieces during each eight-hour shift. They worked 24 hours a day. Remarkably, they cleared the mail in just three months. Early was promoted to Lieutenant Colonel in 1945, the highest possible rank for any woman in the WAC. After leaving the WAC in 1946, Early went back to Ohio State University and completed her master's degree. In 1947, she transitioned to being a Dean of Students for Colleges in Tennessee and Georgia. Charity returned to Ohio in the 1950s. Here, she served the community, sitting on the Board of Directors and the Board of Governors for Dayton's Red Cross and Sinclair Community College. Early was also the founder of the Black Leadership Development Program in Dayton in 1982. It's no wonder that Dayton Public Schools honors the memory and achievements of this extraordinary woman by naming one of its schools after her. The Charity Adams Early Academy serves students from pre-K through the eighth grade. Celebrating Black History Month and Charity Adams Early, I'm Tobias Ashlock for Dayton Public Schools.